Okay, we are live. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September fourteenth meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I just came up with that, Select Board, excuse me. I don't know. Yep, I just got back from vacation. My brain's not. So let's start with public input. Is there anybody either in the room or on the screen who want to have anything to say that's not on the agenda? Okay, so Board member comments, if I could start. I just want to say, actually, having been on vacation, just to remind people, it's my personal plea, not of the Board, that people, we wear masks to protect those around us, not just for ourselves. So I would encourage people to keep wearing masks indoors. Wanted to send out condolences to the family and friends of Andrew St. Dennis, who died this past weekend in a car accident. And congratulations and some hugs particularly to preschool and kindergarten parents for starting school this week. I talked to two parents who just sent their kids off for the first time, and it's not easy. And it gets easier, and I hope they have great years. So but to all the parents, have a good, hopefully have a great school year in person. So those are the only things I had. Other people have any comments that they want to share? Okay, so we had added a new section of recognition in our agendas, and it timed very well because we have five amazing people to recognize this evening. We're going to start with, actually, is Mark on? No, okay, we're going to start with the Police Department. As many people heard, there was a very scary situation on Monday, August sixteenth on Route one seventeen. And in conjunction with Police Chief Sillies, who is here, we want to recognize four members of the Police Department in bringing that, who brought that situation to a nonviolent conclusion. Chief, do you want to start off? Or do you just want to read them?
I was just going to summarize.
Yes, please.
The events and what I'm doing tonight. So on August sixteen.
I'll make sure it turns to you.
So on August sixteenth, the Stowe Police Department received a call during the evening shift that there was, there's a report that the male party was at a residence and that that party had a multiple active warrants out for their arrest. The two officers on duty at the time were Detective Scott and Officer Fitzpatrick. They confirmed the warrants, and then they went down to the house to effect an arrest. During that time, the individual was seen trying to escape the house, but then retreated back in. And during their investigation, they found that there was a firearm that was involved. So what they decided to do was to reassess the situation, to back out and to call for more resources. And we were able to, they were able to get more help to the scene. And by doing that, they established a perimeter, and they were able to continue keeping the perimeter safe, keeping the community safe, and also keeping themselves safe. There was no violence that happened, and no one was injured and no one was hurt during that time. The fact that they took a step back, they reassessed the situation that was going on, shows to their training that they didn't have to rush in after the person and that they could take their time. And that really, I was really impressed. I was there for not the initial onset, but during the standoff. And both officers showed extreme professionalism and calmness, and I couldn't be more impressed by their actions. When I returned to the station, I found that Sergeant Gogan had arrived to the station on his own. And he started handling and coordinating a lot of the resources that we were calling for, calling for the external mutual aid officers to respond, also coordinating our SOMLEC and other teams to come in. Also on duty was our dispatcher Fantasia, who actually continued the continuity of service for the town. There was actually other emergencies that were going on. There was a car fire that night. He was able to keep those nine-one-one calls coming in and providing resources throughout the town for that, for the town as well. So with that being said, Sergeant Gogan and dispatcher Fantasia, I'm going to, I'd like to present to them a letter of commendation for their actions that night. And for Detective Scott and Officer Fitzpatrick, who's not here tonight, not only am I going to give them a letter of commendation, but a ribbon of distinguished service, which they can wear once it comes in on their uniform. So I just wanted to say what a great department I have. The officers are absolutely incredible. It was a team effort. The outcome could not have been any better without their professionalism and the fact that they were able just to take a step back, to reassess, de-escalate, do their training, and do what they're taught. And it was worked out, nobody got hurt, no officer was hurt, and the suspect was taken into custody. So I am very proud of them. Again, I could not be more happy on the outcome. So and this is why I wanted to do that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. It's totally, I mean, it was a scary thing to be out here in the world just reading it online and seeing what that, wait, one seventeen is shut. And I mean, it was really, so it's even more impressive to hear what you just laid out. And I liked the phrase you put on the ribbon of commendation, "superlative and distinguished performance of police duty." I mean, you know, we don't often get to thank you guys, so thank you.
No, it's well-earned, you know, it's well-earned. And they did an amazing job, and like, you know, it just shows like what kind of police department we have. And so it wasn't only, you know, they took care of themselves, and they took care of the person that they were trying to apprehend, and they took care of the rest of the community. So it was not just go in and get the person. It was, everything came into consideration, so, which is absolutely amazing. So they did an incredible job. So here you go. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, so our other recognition tonight is, some people might have read about the amazing journey that began by four paws, four wheels, four hunger in last week's paper. And there's also an interview on Stowe TV. We're honored to have Mark Roberts and his sidekick Mocha. I don't know if we'll get to see Mocha with us tonight to hear. Oh, and Susan. No problem. That's all right. You know, I really wanted you in the building, but that's okay. You know, we'll meet Mocha another time. So I just wanted to start out by saying, Mark has been involved in improving the world throughout his life, yet I loved when he said in the interview, "I wasn't looking for something to do." And yet now he's playing the role across the state, raising money and awareness of the new levels of hunger insecurity. So incredibly honored to have you as a resident and love to hear more about what you're planning. And tell us all. Thank you, Mark.
Sure. For those of you who don't know me, I've spent my life as an environmental activist. And the last ten years, I've been working on climate change and stopping deforestation. About five years ago, I got a really bad neurologic condition, which has made walking and using my hands difficult. So I've had to be forced into an early retirement, and I use an electric wheelchair to go long distances, you know, more than around my house. So last February, I was rolling around near Delaney, and it was one of those beautiful February, bright sunny days, which are super cold. But because of the pandemic, there were tons of people out. And everybody was friendly to me because I had a bright yellow electric wheelchair, which most people don't see. And my dog, if he does show up, is incredibly cute. And I was ruminating on articles I had seen in the paper. The stock market was up, so everything was great. But if you looked at the small articles, they were saying a different thing. There were fifteen million people who had lost their jobs that still hadn't gotten them. And so I thought I would take this wonderful spirit that I get from people in Stowe and try to transform that into people caring about hunger and having a discussion about how we can have so much hunger in this state when we're the second richest state, one of the richest countries that has ever existed. So I decided to go crazy old man in a wheelchair with a really cute dog, and I'm going to raise money for Save the Children and the four major food banks in Massachusetts that service more than a thousand hunger organizations all over the state. And so we're raising money. And I'd really like to thank Melissa Rollins, who came out of the blue as a volunteer. And what she and I have put together is, we're going to roll for seven weeks from West Stockbridge to Boston to Provincetown, talking about hunger, getting discussions about solutions to hunger, and raising money. And so far, we have raised more than thirty thousand dollars towards our goal of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there's three local businesses I'd really like to thank. The first is Patterson Auto Body. Frank Patterson, I had taken my wheelchair into Delaney and gotten a little too adventurous and broken some aluminum piping. And I took my wheelchair into Frank, and he fixed it, dropping everything. And it wouldn't accept any money from me. And that was the first thing. And then once this started, Dave Bundy from Stowe Fitness jumped in and donated two hundred and fifty dollars. And then challenged, if twenty-five members of Stowe Fitness donated, he would give another five hundred dollars. And he's given seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we've gotten more than twenty-five donations. And then finally, Dave Tierney at TSS Graphics is going to wrap my car. Oh, sorry, Doug. Doug Tierney, my notes are wrong, I apologize. He's going to wrap my car with our logo and with the logos of the organizations we're supporting. And he's doing that at no charge. And so that car is going to be our safety car. I'm going to be riding with flags looking kind of like Mad Max. And the safety car that TSS Graphics is doing a fabulous job making look beautiful will be behind. So that's what we're doing. My challenge to everybody in Massachusetts is during the seven weeks, either donate to us or donate to your local food bank. Because hunger is doubled in Massachusetts. One in eight children don't know where their next meal is coming from. And we all have to get together and raise the money, create the food, and get all these people appropriate, appropriately fed. So that's my spiel.
Susan, you want to add anything?
I just want to thank everybody, including some people on this call, for everything you're doing. People have listened to the information, and they're digging deep, and they're donating. They're donating money, they're donating time, they're donating ideas. They're so enthusiastic, and we are really grateful to the community. This is, Stowe is a terrific place, and we're learning that more and more every day. So thank you for those of you on the call and anybody watching. People are pouring out of the woodwork. Last night, Mark told me in his very calm voice that James Taylor had just been in a really generous donation. And I said, "Not me, James."
And it was.
It was.
How cool is that?
That you've got a friend. You have a lot of friends. So that's what I wanted to add.
That's amazing. That's great.
So Mark and Susan, if someone's listening and they want to donate or they want to share something with friends on how to donate, how would they do that?
They would go to a website, which is the number four, and then the word hunger.org, for a 501(c)(3) charity. And you can get in touch with me through that, or you can donate to either our role or to any of the individual organizations, Save the Children or the food major, the four major food banks in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
And your route will unfortunately not come through Stowe, but it goes through Framingham, the sort of southern route.
Right, we're just going south. We had to go where there is need and hunger organizations that we were trying to get. Because as we go along, we'll be stopping at food banks, pantries, kitchens, shelters, and really discussing why we need a thousand hunger organizations in Massachusetts.
Any other thoughts before we move on?
Just a big thank you. I have been volunteering with the Food Pantry for years. And we, I talk to the clients every month. I do the calling for the Food Pantry. And you're absolutely right. Food insecurity is huge. And just being able to help someone to find that next meal is huge. And I just thank you so much for doing this and shedding light on it, and it's great. So good luck to you.
Thanks.
All right, well.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, of course.
I just want to say thank you for donating so much of yourself to this cause. You know, we're all inundated with worthwhile charitable causes almost every day. And many of them involve impressive feats of physical performance of one kind or another. But this is one that I think everybody who hears about has just got to say, "He's doing what?" You know, and we all have to support you. So it sounds like the best way to do that is to get a link at fourhunger.org and email it to everybody you know.
That would be fabulous.
Thank you, Mark and Susan.
Yeah, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you, yeah.
Great. Well, best luck. We look forward to hearing more. We'll keep you informed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, okay.
Very nice start to.
That's a nice start, really, I know, between the police officers and then that, yeah, well. Okay, so we have some appointments to make, other people stepping up to join boards in town. I'm just going to go in the order that they're on the agenda. David Hartnagle is going on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is David with us?
He was not sure he could make it this evening.
Okay, all right. Well, unless anybody has any questions, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint David Hartnagle as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the remainder of a five-year term expiring June thirtieth, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Great.
I just thank David for stepping up.
Yes. Yeah, oh, that's right, because he's been the associate member. The next is Holly Klack to the Conservation Commission. And again, I'm just going to keep checking.
Yep, Holly's on.
Oh, hey, Holly.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you for joining us. It's always nice to have.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. So why don't you tell us just briefly a little about yourself, why you want to be on the CONCON?
Okay, well, I want to be on the Conservation Commission because preserving natural spaces is one of my passions. I've, you know, I've always dreamed to get more involved in that. I want to learn and grow more in that area. And this comes at a perfect time because my daughter just went away to college. I have a very demanding job, but I don't want to end up working all of the time and really commit and give back to my community. I've lived in Stowe since, gosh, nineteen ninety-five. And love it here, love the natural places we have, and really want to help with solutions and preservation going forward.
That's awesome. Great. Any questions for Holly?
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, we love that you're stepping up. That's true.
I'm also a fellow Michigander, and so I wanted to say thank you for your, you know, work on the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy. It is one of the most beautiful places, I think, in the world. And so just had to mention that as I saw that. First I saw them, and I said, "She had to be from Michigan."
That's where, that's where it all began for me. Because I moved there from, from the Washington DC suburbs, you know, where I lived in suburbal, suburbs of all that. And then when I moved to Michigan, just that, that natural beauty is just incredible. So that's really where my passion was founded.
Nice. Great. Another shout out to, you know, Michigan, that's all. All right, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Holly Klack to the Conservation Commission for the remainder of a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly, and welcome.
Thanks, Holly.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Next, Lori Burnett to the Open Space Committee. Open Space Committee? Open, it's just Open Space.
She was here.
Okay, all right.
She must have had to go. She, she thought she was going to have a conflict, so, but she was on for a moment.
So unless anybody has anything to add, we'll just take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Lori Burnett to the Open Space Committee for the remainder of a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, 2023.
Second.
Any, any comments or?
Quick comment.
Yes, of course.
I spoke with Lori recently at the art exhibit in the Stowe Center Park. And I think she'll be an asset to our. Grateful she's stepping up.
Oh, okay, that's great.
Might mean it's sixty-five.
Before now.
So I will take a motion.
It was a motion.
You just had a comment. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Great. All right. And then we have two appointments to the Green Advisory Committee, which we just created at our last meeting. I just want to remind people, so there's, we have two at-large seats, and then we will later in our meeting discuss the seat that's by the Select Board. But this is just for the at-large positions, which is George Peterman, who I saw up there, right? And there's John Santramano as well. So why don't we start with George? Hi, George. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much for having me.
So why don't you tell us a little about yourself, why you want to be on the Green Committee?
Okay, well, for background, I've been a Stowe resident now for over forty years. And I've certainly seen the town grow, and I've loved its character and everything about the town itself. I've been involved on and off in environmental issues since back in the days of Jimmy Carter. I don't know if anybody remembers him, but he started some environmental issues and tax-advantaged building programs at that time. I retired from a career in human resources. I've been in that for about forty years. Geez, I'm sounding awfully old. I retired from human resources in two thousand thirteen and became aware of and engaged with what was then the Stowe Solar Challenge. And I've worked on the Stowe Solar Challenge. I've worked on the Rec Commission of Stowe, Green Communities Act, and the recent Heat Smart Program. All excellent programs supported and sponsored by the Sustainable Stowe Organization. And I'd like to continue in that vein and contribute to the town in the areas of environmental issues and sustainability. And I think this is an excellent platform to do that.
Terrific. Great. Any questions? Let's take a motion.
Madam Chair, and I just want to note for the record that I remember Jimmy Carter, and he was the first president that I voted for.
All right, there you go.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint George Peterman as Member-at-Large of the Green Advisory Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, 2022, and subject to annual appointments thereafter.
Second.
Any other comments? We can discuss who was alive or not alive during Jimmy Carter, but, you know. Okay, all in favor?
It was a great year. The clothes were really good.
Thank you so much, George. Glad to have you aboard. Thank you. And the next at-large seat, John Santramano.
Hi, my name is Don Santramano. I'm likewise been at Stowe for about thirty-five years. I've done a bunch of volunteer roles, CONCON and the Rec Commission and Master Plant. I was, I've been a member of Sustainable Stowe the last three years, worked on the Heat Smart Program. I think timing is right for a climate plan. I think it's really important. I think that some things that we do or can do are symbolic, and some things are real and very important. And perhaps the climate plan is a little of each, but hopefully getting into the important things. So glad to be appointed as the at-large member and looking forward to working.
Great. Thank you, John. Any questions for John? I know John has been a volunteer of so many different boards, and we're grateful for all of them. So thank you, John, including the Boy Scouts. You didn't even mention the Boy Scouts, but, yeah. So I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint John Santramano as Member-at-Large of the Green Advisory Committee for a term expiring June thirtieth, 2022, and subject to annual appointment thereafter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Mary Brett Mince, which I don't think is on to join, or actually sort of rejoin, I guess, the Economic Development and Industrial Commission that she had been serving on and had to step down for a bit. But she is willing to come back, which is great. So unless anybody has anything else to add, or, I don't know, do you have anything else to add, Joyce?
Nope, I think she is, would be a welcome addition to the EDIC. I think they're looking forward to having her back on board. And she certainly feels that she has the time now to dedicate to this committee, so I think it's great.
Sounds great. Motion, please, Mr. Salvi.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Mary Brett Mince to the Economic Development and Industrial Commission for the remainder of a five-year term expiring June thirtieth, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Great. Thank you all for stepping up. Really appreciate it. Couldn't run the town without all our volunteers. So if you're intrigued by all these new, if you're listening and you've seen all these people stepping up, there's still more committees in search of members. So that's on the website if you're interested. Next, setting a special town meeting date and opening the warrant. Denise, I will hand this to you.
Yes, thank you. So as we spoke about at our last meeting, we are looking to schedule a special town meeting specifically for the Stowe Acres article, which I will say the CPC unanimously voted to support the funding of that last night. So after speaking with the town clerk, we checked with the schools, and I did finally touch base with our moderator today, who is on this call. Saturday, October thirtieth is our recommended date. I think we've settled on ten AM. That gives us a little time in the morning. I don't expect it to be a lengthy special town meeting. And we plan to do it fully indoors at Hale School, to go back to the auditorium at Hale. There are some logistics issues that we can work through with David as far as the setup, given the, there is still COVID, and we do want to still be, pay attention to social distancing. But it would have to be a fully masked indoor special town meeting. And I would ask that you formally open the warrant. I have sent out notification to departments and boards and committees letting them know that it's coming so they could start working on their articles, given the short turnaround time. And then I will ask that you close the warrant on Monday, October fourth, which will give us time to have council review any articles, the Finance Committee to meet, capital improvements to meet, and you all to meet before we have to have the warrant posted by the fifteenth.
It's a tight schedule, for sure.
Yes, it is.
Any questions?
An unfair one, Mr. Salvi. Do you expect other articles at this point?
So I have been told there will be a few. I will tell you, we are putting one on for PFAS. The prices have escalated, and we're quickly going through the money that was just appropriated in the spring. So I will be putting another PFAS article. I have been told that the EDIC is putting a sign-by-law change to the illuminated, internally illuminated signs. That still has to go through Planning Board vetting, so I'm not sure if that will make it or not, but that's been rumored. We have to address the increasing costs of fixing the dam, which I am working on, so there may be an article with that. But I have not heard otherwise. Actually, the assessors are planning to put a couple exemption articles. So I would expect no more than ten.
Yeah.
I would be shocked if we had more than that, to be honest with you. So obviously, Stowe Acres will be the focal point, but there will be some cleanup articles. I'm not, it's not my intention to use any free cash. I talked to the accountant today, she's working on getting everything into the state to get it certified, but I'd really rather not use that if we didn't have to at this point in the year, so.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, you ready for a motion?
Yeah, unless there's other questions?
Can I just, if, if, if our moderator, or deputy moderator, they're both on, if they have any comments?
Sure.
I don't know that they do, but.
Mr. Walrath, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
Uh, no, I was just texting our town clerk saying, although my opinion doesn't mean too much, I do greatly approve of having additional articles at this town meeting because it means a shorter spring town meeting.
That's wishful thinking.
I don't think it works that way.
I don't think it works that way.
It's not a zero-sum game.
No, it's just more articles.
We can believe it will work that way, so, okay, and.
Like the town administrator said, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna aim for an all indoor town meeting and we'll need to figure out the logistics for that. We have had fall town meetings before that had to get canceled due to, or postponed due to hurricanes and other weather, so I don't think, even if we had COVID relief funds, planning on an outdoor tent would be one dice roll too many, so. I, I appreciate the town administrator and selectmen aiming for an indoor town meeting at Hale, and that's all I have to say.
Well, the Hale benefit is that we've used the different rooms in Hale, the cafeteria and even the auditorium, so if we have to spread people out, we can do that, it's much easier than at center.
Yes, and, and I've been told the clickers work better at Hale because of the logistics there, so hopefully we will have to test that out. Additionally, setup is easier at Hale because we can set up in advance, unlike being there the Friday night before, trying to get everything ready for the next morning, so there are definitely some benefits to being at Hale. And I'll actually get to see the school for the first time.
Yep. Ms. Spear, did you want to add something? Your picture just came up, so we thought I'd say hi.
Hi, no, what David said, no problem.
Okay, okay, all right. Mr. Salvi, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board set a special town meeting for Saturday, October 30th, 2021, to be held at Hale Middle School starting at 10:00 AM. Further, I move to open the special town meeting warrant on September 14th, 2021 and close the warrant on Monday, October 4th, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Mr. Walrath and Ms. Spear, and we're ready to roll, so. Okay, so.
We'll be here before you know it.
Yeah, we'll be here before you know it, for sure. So next on the agenda, we have SMT, which some people might not know what that stands for. First, I just want to remind people that we've been asking various key committees to come join the select board for a conversation of the committee goal, their committee goals for the upcoming year and how we can support them and each other. Tonight, we have the Stowe Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, finally known as SMT. And to be transparent, the Chair of SMT is my husband, Mike Kapczynski, who I will ask to introduce members of the trust who are on the call and then kick off our discussion. Is he there?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Madam Chair, I suppose.
Mr. Kapczynski.
I, I think, I can't really see everyone who's, who's connected, but I think Laura is the only other SMT member. The other members are Cynthia Perkins, Quinn's top of us to see you, and, well Courtney, of course, who is there, I believe, right? I couldn't see you Courtney, because your, your name's not on the, on the roster.
Wasn't on the line.
So I, I guess this is being my, our first opportunity to come before the whole select board, I, what, how, what is the format that you would prefer? You have questions for us, or would you like us to do some sort of presentation about our work plan for the year?
I think you starting out with your work plan, I, I don't believe you have slides, you don't need slides, just to, you know, give us the overview and then we can go from there.
Okay, that's, that's great. This is what I'm gonna, you know, the, the quick run-through is that I'd like to talk a little bit about the Habitat project, where that stands, a little bit about the Red Acre land, and also potentially bring up the topic of the, the former Highway Barn on Crescent Street and the disposition of that, of that property. And I, in case there might be any questions about the affordable aspects of Stowe Acres, I wanted to make ourselves available so that we could, we could answer those things if they, if there are any questions that come up. So I'll proceed if that's okay, folks. So as far as the Habitat, you know, we have the, the, you know, there was, that was a property that was under the care and control of SMT and it has, was transferred once the, there was, the permitting was, was, was allowed to Habitat for Humanity for North Central Massachusetts. They have begun, to the extent they can, have begun the, the process and they have put shovels in the ground to start some, start some, some work, and I believe the, the rentarians had a, had a workday there and did some, did some work and got things kind of off to a running start. There is a private lawsuit against both the Habitat and the town, and I actually don't know, haven't, I haven't checked in with Denise lately about what the, what the status of that is, so I'd be interested if she had any more news on that, on that piece, on the, on the part with involving ZDA, but.
Nothing I can discuss here, Mike.
Okay, great, thank you. But there's, but essentially that project, except for that private lawsuit, is, is ready to go forward and I don't think, because of the uncertainty of that, that was not put on this summer's work plan for, for Habitat, but, you know, good Lord willing and the creek don't rise, we'll be ready to, to start real work in the spring for Habitat. So the next piece to talk about would be the Red Acre parcel, to, just to remind folks, that is a parcel that was bought with the, with Conservation, with Conservation Commission, with CPA funds, and with the CoConservation Trust, 40-plus acres, 45 acres, I think, 42 acres maybe, are, went into conservation, and there's a potential, there's trails and other things, there's also potential for, at some point, for a municipal well because of the good aquifer in that area that would be accessible for that part of town, it could be public water, also that would, that this, that, if any housing development as, as it goes forward could also potentially tap into that, that's something to keep in mind for, for town planning purposes, that, that is a, that is a distinct possibility there, that's probably the best, possibly the best aquifer in town, so, and within hailing distance of the Lower Village. We have done pre-engineering work on this and we, well first we took down the, the buildings that were there for indoor, some of the money, and, and now we've done pre-engineering work and we've also had a, a public forum where, it was just in June, I guess, and that, the video of that Zoom meeting was, is posted on SMT's webpage, if anybody would like to, well it's on, I guess it's on, it's a link to the Stowe TV recording, but if anybody liked to, if anybody hasn't seen that would like to. Mostly just talked about the property, about the, the issues of public access, style, and our, and style of, of the, the situation of the, potentially of the homes on that site and also architectural style, which is, you know, we, we got some good info about that. We also, most of the questions and concerns were not particularly about this project, except that of the, the, the traffic and the, the kind of entrance and exit to this property on Red Acre Road. There are a lot of concerns about the speed and the, and the topography of that road and that is not something that we can address with this project at all, but probably something for us to keep in mind. Certainly there are folks there from planning and from highway out at the meeting that, that heard those concerns and I think that's probably a larger conversation, and if, as part of this project, we can have an audience for that larger issue, I think that would be, that would be a good thing as well. The next steps for us on this would be, are twofold. One is, we are going to be putting an application with the Community Preservation Committee for the funding, the subsidy funding that we're going to be, that will be needed for this project, just so that it's clear, we have a better idea now of the range of what that subsidy will need to be, and so we're going to be putting that application in over, hopefully this month. Let's see, it's months going away quickly, so this month or early next month, let's say. Also, there are some options we have in the, in the permitting. There's a presumption that this would be a comprehensive permit project, and that is certainly possible. Having been through this process now with, with the Habitat parcel, we also know that no matter how much outreach we do and how many public forums and, and how many letter, how many letters that the editor published and editorials, et cetera, that, that if there are people who are opposed to this, they may not show up until, until a proposal is put in front of the ZDA. And so we're, we're trying to explore if there are other ways to be able to do this permitting and to do this project that don't require a comprehensive permit, and we're, you know, two-pronged approach there, we're looking for technical assistance from places like Mass Development, MAPC, and Mass Housing, to potentially see if there's any, any sort of zoning, zoning options for this parcel, and we're going to be meeting with the planning board. There's also, as you may know, that there, the recent bill that was, the housing choices bill, that was, our housing choice bill that was passed not too long ago, is, is going to have an impact on the way all towns will be handling multifamily housing, and because of that, there may be opportunities for us to, to, to do some, put some zoning flexibility in such that there are, for multifamily and affordability, we could, since there are going to be, changes are going to be required by the state in any case, there may be ways of being able to, to accomplish more than one goal with some creative thinking ahead of time, so. So we will be meeting with the planning board shortly to have kind of a joint meeting and, and explore different ideas along those lines. Lastly, there was, or not lastly, pardon me, but next would be that a few years ago, I guess it's at least two, maybe three years ago now, I think maybe, there was a task force put together about uses of municipal buildings and, and needs for the town for different places, and, and in that report, the, one of the properties that was assessed was the, the former Highway Barn and former recycling center, former cemetery, we could use former, a lot of things, but the building on Crescent Street that's right next to the, the cemetery. And at that time, that report had looked at all the different, all the different departments and potential uses, and the recommendation of that report was for us, was for SMT to explore whether this would be a potential site for, for housing as well. So we would, knowing how long these things, if you, you know, it's hard to believe, but the, with, SMT got care and control of the, of the Pine Point Suburban Road parcel in 2013, we're going on eight, almost nine years for that, and that project's still not built. So given that these things can have a long, a long ramp-up time, we're starting to look at what the next, the, the next project will be after Red Acre, and this is, this is, this is a potential one, and so we'd like to, we identified, for the Pine Point process and the Queens Lane parcels at that point, we had suggested to the, to the, to the select board at that point that there was a, a process for how lands can be declared surplus and be transferred to a group like SMT, and that was accepted at that time. Obviously, this, this board can do, can use that as just advisory and see if there weren't any changes they'd like to make to that process, but we'd like to potentially start that discussion and see if, if there is, if that's still a viable, a viable option for that land, and whether maybe in the interim, maybe there have been other, other, other groups or other people who might be interested in that. So those were all the, that's the kind of major things on our work plan. We have some other minor things that are more kind of administrative. This, a couple people have asked the question to us of, that if there's this, you know, are there potential larger-scale projects like the ones that, that has, has been tentatively proposed in Stowe Acres, why would we go ahead and continue to do these small, you know, four-unit, two-unit, six-unit projects? And I'd say two, there are two good reasons, one is that we don't really know what's going to happen on those sort of projects, and we, it's important for us to show that we're making progress on a continual basis and working against the housing production plan. Oh, that's actually another thing that we should, of those administrative things, is our housing production plan is now, is now, is, is up in October. We've been, we were gonna start working on that earlier, but we were waiting for the census numbers to come out so that we would know what numbers, and that's what we were advised by DHCD to do, to wait until the, the 2020 census numbers were released, before we start working on the HPP again. But the other thing is, is that if there, even if there is a large project like that, that will be phased in a number of, over a number of years, and only the, only the units that are issued permits, building permits, are, are able to be counted against SHI, so by, and that may not be enough in any one year to give us the safe harbor for the, the one-year process, so continuing to have units that we can supplement those units, even, you know, that, that would be, and it's great if we can do that, but if we can do units to supplement that so that we can extend the period of safe harbor, that, that's a, that's probably a pretty good strategy for us to use. So I think that's, Laura, if I would, if you, if, if there's anything that we discussed last time, if there's any, if there's anything else, please, please chime in, or chime in on anything else you may, with us.
Thank you for the update. Just so that everyone knows, it's really important to understand what safe harbor means and what we're trying to accomplish. So it's really twofold. First of all, we're trying to provide a variety of housing for all kinds of income levels in town. Having said that, there's also kind of a state mandate where we are encouraged to have 10% certified affordable housing across the town in order for us to meet certain levels of control. So if we can get 10%, then we can actually tell developers, no, we don't really want you coming in and building in all kinds of large-scale development as long as a certain percentage is affordable, and usually that's in the hundreds of units. And so what we're trying to do is little by little, have some certified, not just cheap, but certified affordable housing developed in town over time, so that we can actually say, look, we are progressing, we're developing against a plan, that's the housing production plan that Mike referenced, and that we are delivering upon it so that we are showing our commitment to providing certified affordable housing in town. A lot of people don't get the difference, they think that affordable housing is cheap housing or like bad housing, it's not, it really isn't. We're just trying to make sure that we have housing that accommodates a variety of income levels across our town.
And, and where are we, are we in safe harbor still now?
No, no.
Thank you.
No, we were, we were, but we are not now.
We were for a year.
Yes.
Now, I have to say that, that, you know, with also if, if the plantation to apartments move forward, that would be enough to give us safe harbor for a year, and so there's a number of projects that if we, if they're, if they're sequenced in the right order, we can, we can stay in safe harbor until those larger projects are completed, potentially putting us over 10% on a permanent basis, or permanent.
And safe har, yeah, safe harbor only means that we have the ability to say yes or And safe har, yeah, safe harbor only means that we have the ability to say yes or no. But we have to have a certified approved housing production plan by the Department of Housing and Community Development in order to have that control. So when our current HPP plan expires in October, we're not going to have that control, regardless of whether we have affordable housing introduced in the town or not.
Right. So that's why it's, it's important that we continue with the plan. Now, I have to say, compared to many towns, that we have both had a very progressive production plan also, and also it made more progress, sometimes in spite of ourselves, but made more progress toward those goals than, than other towns. And we've been, have, been, had very encouraging feedback from DHCD.
And once you produce your HPP after the census numbers are out, does it go to town meeting or is it just something you as a board approved?
No, it has to be, it has to be certified by the Department of Housing and Community Development.
And it's submitted technically by the select, the select board. So we, we would produce this, well, we don't have to. If you'd like, if someone else would like to do it, I'm sure we could, we'd be happy to, to take a step back. But the last three, I think we've, we've worked with the planning board, obviously worked with the planning board. And we're out of cycle now, but we, we have every other one that we do, we've done with a master planning process. And, and we're on a cycle right now, but it, when it makes sense, we, so, so for this one, we probably won't do like any sort of public outreach or, or poll or anything like that because we do that every other one when we, when we do a, a larger effort to do that for the, for the master plan and get opinions about, about housing and other things for the plan. And we, we then incorporate that feedback from, from citizens or residents rather to, into the, into the plan. So that would be every, every 10 years instead of every five years.
So I want to go back to your, sort of the larger presentation. One of the things, Mike, you said towards the end, when we were talking about the differences of going for the smaller amounts, smaller projects, not just the big, large projects. Did that come up? Was that a previous master plan? At some point, there was some opinion stated, a feeling of the town that we wanted to have smaller affordable housing, you know, scattered around town rather than in centralized locations.
That certainly in the, the last master plan survey that was done, there was a preference for smaller infill, infill projects versus larger projects, particularly if they were like larger rental projects. And that's, I think that's not unusual. Most towns in Stowe's situation, the residents aren't terribly excited about large rental, or large rental developments. But we've been very fortunate to have, to have the, you know, Pilot Grove as a good neighbor and, and, and partner and the, the Stowe Housing, Stowe Community Housing Corporation and its various, and its various smaller associations, you know, under that umbrella has been a wonderful partner in developing projects and, and providing the real, since we don't really have any public housing in Stowe, those are the only, the only large scale, and they're not even that large, but, but larger scale affordable housing developments in town.
Questions from the board?
Any, any feedback on these projects that we're, as we're, you know, anything you'd like to, to, any guidance or feedback on process or?
Yeah, true.
Well, the answer to his question is no, but I, I had a different question. Mike, I, I appreciate the updates, especially on Pine Point and Red Acre. I particularly lost track of, of Pine Point. My only question is, other than acting expeditiously on your draft of the HPP, is there something, is there anything that you need from the select board right now?
I'd say that would be, I, I hope that speaking out of turn, but I would say that support for using community preservation money for the subsidy is, you know, is, is, would be key. We, that's one of the reasons that we have decided to, to apply now, even though it's not clear when exactly the money will be needed. But we would, we want to make sure that both the CPC and the rest of the town are aware of the needs for the subsidy for this because we are looking at a number of projects in the future that where CPC money might be, might be needed in one way or another. And we wanted, we certainly had conversations with the, with the, with the committee about, about the needs for this, but we thought that the wisest course was to actually put the application in so that it, it kind of formally letting everyone know that this is going to be needed, even if it's not, you know, this, this month that we're going to need the money. But, but that it is going to be there so that it's, that's, you know, it's on the docket and, and considered in the context of the other needs that may be looking for that. So it would be, it would be wonderful if we were, we've got a vote of confidence for this project from the Board of Selectmen, even though I don't know that that has any actual weight with the CPC.
Brief comment, I think the study that was done that would have included the Highway Barn might have been in 2017 because I think it included the town hall. You know, I personally think that's a useful thing to have on our radar, to consider steps that it takes. I mean, I don't think it's only our action, but for that to become determined whether it's surplus or not and potentially turned over for a, for a useful purpose. Yeah, we should move it along.
So we'll, we'll keep that on the radar for the process that you referred to. I believe it's sort of a joint boards meeting that we'd have a discussion around any other possible uses for that property.
It was sort of, I think.
Necessary but not sufficient.
I think, I think morale is higher when you don't have a sort of a bad tooth of a building sitting there.
I don't disagree with that at all. I, I think it might be part of a larger issue that we're going to touch on as part of the town administrator's goals, which is all about facilities and, you know, part of, in this town, part of facilities review, I think is what to do with facilities that have aged out that we still have.
Right.
So.
Any, any other comments? Denise, anything to add?
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Mike and Laura, for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to have the update.
Nice job.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and all of the select board members. Thank you.
All right. Oh, now we had fun. Let me say, we're all sorts of high points tonight. So we get to talk about our town administrator's evaluation. So I just, I'm going to introduce this process so make sure we, everyone knows what we are responsible for doing. So one of our most important tasks of the select board is to hire and evaluate our town administrator. And as most people know, in most businesses, personnel reviews are confidential. But as a public entity, we find a balance where we present a summary without names attached and specifics, but it gives the public a complete sense of the evaluation. So specifically, we went through, we agreed, I believe in our, just our last meeting, we went through, agreed on a new form to use. We all completed it individually. We each had an opportunity to meet with the town administrator separately to, to discuss the specifics. And then I was tasked with compiling the five reviews, both in terms of the numeric section as well as the summarizing the comments. And so just so you know, if, if you're interested in all the details, it's in our packet from tonight's meeting as well as the form we used, the blank form of how we were asked to score and comment by sections. So I'm going to read the summary statement and then I'll open it up if anybody wants to add anything. So this is an evaluation of Denise Nibroski for the period September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. Denise is a great asset to the town and the leader we need to move us forward. During her short tenure, we have embarked on a path of improvements in technology and transparency, policy clarification and renewal in a more general sense. With many new staff following retirements, this is a moment to redefine Stowe while still appreciating our past. Denise is not only incredibly competent, but is she is also empathetic, a quality that cannot be taught, but is inherent and key to a high functioning municipal government. By listening to staff and suggesting best practices that she has developed and observed over many years in municipal government, she is creating an environment that thrives instead of just survives. Denise is an integral part of the select board and we will encourage her more, to have more active participation as we together develop work plans to move the town forward. We look forward to seeing Denise continue to grow and move the town forward, hopefully with less emphasis on COVID coordination and more focus on the town's long-term goals. Her overall evaluation was 4.73 out of a possible 5.0. And finally, we couldn't be more satisfied with our new town administrator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody want to add any additional comments? No. I think we're just very pleased.
Can I just?
Of course.
I feel like we have to. I, a great year. I think we all agree. It's just a great year. And, you know, when you, when you're sitting there deciding who to hire, you're, you're thinking a year ahead about that first performance review. And is that going to be where the lid comes off, the steaming pile of something that, you know? Or is it going to be where we are today, which is where, this is where I had hoped we would be? So thank you for that. I just want to comment on two things. The chair mentioned, I think your training wheels are off and you should, I believe, and I think many of us do, have a far more active role on, at these meetings as though you, I, I would say as though you are a sixth member of the board. I mean, there's really no reason not to. You're not going to get a vote, but your voice should be heard on just about everything. And I just want to point out, I thought your, your response and your planning and, and on the coronavirus pandemic, which was the big topic from last year, was, was perfect. And in particular, there, there came a point when you were getting pressure on them, from on the board and off the board to take a stance on something. And it was not a timely thing to do, and you stood your ground. And you had been here like five months. And you were going up against, I mean, a little dramatic, but not much. You know, you were going up against people who had been in this town for decades. And I was impressed. I still am.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say something briefly. When we interviewed you, I had no doubt. I had no thought of the, the lid of a steaming pile of anything. It was dead clear to me right there. And you have completely, you've exceeded my expectations.
Thank you.
It's delightful.
I, I had a great meeting with Denise earlier and, and yesterday. And I just wanted to share, you know, I review often in an HR setting and this was one of the few times where two things really hit. One was, it was the highest score I've ever given of any review. And it's because frankly, I think that she's earned it. And I think that's a really big deal to earn that score. And the second thing is, it was the first time when I sat down and looked at an evaluation and I immediately eliminated numbers one, two, and three because I knew there was no reason that those numbers should be there. And that made me really reflect, you know, of like less evaluation and more, so where are we going? And that's a really exciting place to be, to know that, that the next discussion is our, is the goals. And it's really where you can show us in a year how just, how even more amazing that it can be by achieving those goals. And, and we know that you can. So I just wanted to say thank you and I look forward to the next, to the next year.
Yeah, I think when, you know, you're trying to do an evaluation and you have to think of something productive, you know, constructive criticisms and it's hard to come up with any. I'm like, you know, it just, I sort of to the same, like, why would you have one to three? So, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you Denise. And, and now we get to start the, the next year where, you know, we kept on saying, well, we couldn't give you go, we didn't give you goals this year except we made it through the first year. So.
If I may pause you first, I just want to thank you all for the, for the year and the support. It's really been great, uh, this last year, working with you all. And I do look forward to figuring out goals and moving forward. That being said, if you could kindly vote to approve the summary so that we have, you know, a vote.
Right, that's right. Sorry, I noticed that there was a motion and I forgot. Thank you.
Going on the evaluation, I think.
Yes, yes, the summary.
So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the performance evaluation summary as presented at the meeting. The, I move to approve the performance evaluation, evaluation summary of the town administrator as presented at the meeting of September 14th, 2021.
Second.
Were there any, I actually didn't ask if there was any changes or comments on it. So all good? All right. All in favor? Yeah, that's unanimous. Great. Thank you.
I actually want to compliment the chair. I noticed a few of my comments, a few colloquialisms that I put in there and a few things that were my personal tone. It was edited and it edited well.
Well, and I appreciate everybody's comments. It was really, it, it was both hard and fun to try to put them together. They, they actually, they co-list pretty nicely. So. Okay, so those goals, we had, we, we created quite the list. See what happens when we don't have them. Initially, I was thinking, okay, we got short term, we got long term, we have detail, we have general. Luckily Denise gave us a revised suggestion of slightly shorter list. I don't know how much shorter, but it's a little more succinct. So I'm not really sure how we want to, I mean, I don't know if this is just too long or if we want to go through them and just say, you know, we don't have to rank them as important. But do we want to leave them in for this year? I guess, I, I want to focus, I guess, on this year's goals. Though I had a hard time, I mean, I, I want to leave Lower Village in because, because it's a big, it's, you know, second in, in importance to me from, from Stowe Acres. But, but any case, so I, does anybody have a sort of process suggestion? Or maybe Denise, do you have a suggestion, given that you tried to?
Sorry. I was just wondering, what I, what I would like to hear from you, if you feel like any of these are ones that you would scratch from this year. Well, that's what I was thinking. So. Right. So originally there were 20, 20, what I'll call current year, three longer term and then some policy questions for the future discussions. What I had done with those 20 is I consolidated some of them. So there were similar ones. So I've consolidated those. And I, I mean, quite frankly, 20 is a lot. But that being said, I think most are all attainable in the year because some of them are simple, some of them we're already in the process with. I did move a couple to, I moved one to the longer, actually I think two. I rearranged the longer term goals a little bit. Maybe just the one. I did take off a couple just because I think we need to have some other discussions on that. So specifically, I, I think Ellen, you mentioned implement HR policies and onboard the ATA. Well, she started yesterday. She's been onboarded. So, and I'll go over that a little bit. But so I added the implement the HR policies with the one I think Zach originally submitted about HR. So I've sort of consolidated those. I did take off the Regional Board of Health because I think that's a larger discussion on where we're going as a town with Board of Health Services. Uh, we can certainly have those conversations, but where it's an elected board of health, I didn't really know that I should be spearheading that directly at this point. The COVID related funds, I took that off because that's sort of a no brainer that has to be done anyways, that we will make use of those funds. So I really just tweaked some of them and consolidated. I did also take off the fire chief with the deadline. The process is, is starting. So that will be happening. But I just figured, again, that's, even though that's an easy attainable goal, I, I figured it's not necessary to put it on the list. And then the bylaw and charter review, I changed a little bit to work with the moderator because I don't have any say in one of those committees. That has to be with their appointment. So I can certainly assist and help nudge that along. And I'd be more than happy to, I believe he appoints the charter review and we appoint the bylaw review. So I can certainly start the bylaw. We, I can work with him on the charter review. We can do another push to try and get folks on that. Maybe Katie, who did it the last time, might want to participate. But so I will certainly work on this. But I, so I just tweaked those a little bit. So I'm happy to discuss the 12 that we've narrowed it down to. And obviously the longer term goals, at Lower Village, it's a no brainer. We will need to develop a plan. I almost put track road on there because I'm not sure when and if federal funding will come down. If it will be this coming year. Laurie Trahan seemed pretty confident it would be the fall. But I, so I left it on there. The full facilities budget and planning for, I would like to start that. I just don't know if that will be finished in the year. I just don't know if that will be finished in the year. And obviously the twenty-year capital plan, again, we will start those things. I don't know if we'll be able to finish some of those larger projects. So that being said, I'm happy to discuss your thoughts on what I've narrowed it down to and if there's any that you think should, should not be on there or others that you would like to add on there or add back on there.
Yeah.
Um, I was gonna say, just kind of looking at all of this, a lot of these are, are you facilitating stuff with other committees and things? So though it is a huge list of things, it's really sort of Denise is saying to this committee, I need you to do X, Y, and Z, I will give you whatever resources. So to me, this doesn't look like a list that is scary to me to give to you. And so, I, I mean, I, I think it's, it's great. And I don't, it doesn't, I guess, and I said this to you in your review, but I feel like having now worked with you for a year, it, this doesn't feel like it's, this would be biting off more than you can chew. And quite frankly, it feels like, like you would be able to achieve these goals. Which is what I think we also, we want to give you things to work towards, but we also don't want to like overwhelm you. And, and it feels like a lot of these are achievable, so. My two cents?
Great, thank you. I had, well, I sort of, I, track road was the one that I thought should move as well, just because as much about timing as anything else. I, I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned about some of them. They get into very specific detail on whether we need to, I, I don't, you know, for goals, it's not usually quite that specific. So I don't want to tie your hands on, particularly like with the traffic safety advisory committee is new. We're not setting their agenda per se. I, I just thought that, you know, I, I got the, the spirit of it, but I thought the specifics were maybe a little too restrictive. And, and I hear what you're saying on the, the ones that I put on that, that totally makes sense. But I, I guess to echo what Megan was saying, I think, as, as was commented over and over again in your evaluation, you know, you are the ultimate facilitator and your influence is significant. So even if you're not officially, like, like with the bylaws and the, I mean, you will make things happen. Because you'll, you'll remind people that this is what you have authority to do. Oh, right, you know, or, or, you know, or even just simple things of reposting the meetings multiple times or of openings so that we get people on the committee. So I, I, I mean, I think again, to that long list thing, it's like, it is about, you know, how you can help make things happen. You know, hopefully they aren't ending up in your, you know, on your computer having to be done by you. Other thoughts?
I think like Ellen, the lower village has become one of my top priorities to pay attention to. And so I'm curious what you think without, you know, again, having to go into a ton of detail right now, but what you think we could do, you know, given that it's on a longer term, you know, list or, or basis, what could we begin to do to just start paying attention or start waking the topic up and?
Yeah, I mean, well, we've, we've already started. I mean, we've been having meetings internally, we've had meetings with our state stakeholders to figure out if there's funding available, if there's not, how much funding we would need, what do we need funding for? Is it planning and engineering? You know, we've had some conversations with business owners down there. You know, some of it comes into land restraints that we're trying to work through. So it's not that we're not doing anything, it's just, you know, obviously everything takes time and everything, most everything takes money. So we're trying to work through really what's the top priority to start so we actually have a, a basis for where we go from there. And I really do think it's, we need to bring in, I think we need to bring in a couple of different consultants. We've talked about having perk tests done because we really don't know what the water availability is. So having that done, having some, some engineering done to see what the capability could be. And then really start having those more directed conversations with the board, the residents, the businesses down there, and just all the stakeholders about what the options would be.
Great. So given that you said that, that's a lot going on now in this year. So I guess then the question is, what, what makes it a longer, I mean, yes, it's a longer term goal because it's huge and there's many facets to it. But does that take it into a different place for your goals for this year, I guess?
No, it's just, I don't think we'll have a conclusion in a year. So that's why I felt, felt it was more, you know, if you had to look back and say, you know, well, you didn't reach these, you know, I, I don't think I can reach that. Certainly planning discussions, yes, but trying to come up with some definitive plan, I don't know that that's reachable in a year.
I'm sorry to understand, you're not gonna not work on the Lake Boone Dam in the next year? It just isn't, the whole thing isn't gonna be solved in the next year?
Correct, yeah, I mean, everything is going to be worked on. But yes, we're not gonna have a conclusion to that with any, I would love to, but, you know, next year at this time, it's not all gonna be perfect down there, on either location. Quite frankly.
See, we, we really have very high expectations of you now.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have just three comments. One is, I do hear you, Madam Chair, with regards to number seven. I provided basically what was the mandate of the traffic safety advisory committee. I'm happy to also reduce that down to really asking her to help with D, which is ensuring that they can come and present to us since obviously I think all of us hear traffic issues every single week. That having and, and prioritizing it as a goal, but also then making sure they come in and are comfortable presenting to us. What are, what are they hearing? I attended the one on Monday, which was very wonderfully run and, and worth attending. And, and I think it would be very helpful to have them come back and report what they're seeing. And so I'm, I'm happy to consolidate that one down to just a D. And then obviously know that, that it's a, it's a priority to facilitate whatever comes out, you know, from their committee in terms of recommendations. I'm concerned a little with number eight because it is, Denise, I believe in the charter, your purview to recommend the reorganization of any of our departments. And that, that is your purview. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're gonna make that a goal. It may be something you recommend to us, but I, I don't want us to jump in front of what is your, based on the charter, your obligation. So I'd like to, if we could remove number eight, it's not that I don't think it's important, it's just that I want you to, when you're ready and prepared, if it's this year, if it's next year, say I'm ready to reorganize and consolidate. Because the charter says that it's your purview, I would rather it be in your ballpark to say, you know, board, I'm ready to consolidate, this is my plan, this is what I'd like to do. I don't want us to set that as a goal to then make you feel like if you end up, after hearing everything and choosing not to do it, that you feel, well, it's a goal and the board has told me this is a mandate. I, I don't want us to mandate it on you, even though this is probably going to happen and is, and is a good idea and whatnot as you present it, but I don't want to jump in front of the charter. So that is one of my only concerns on that.
And I appreciate that I put the goal on. That is my goal for this year. That is one of my top goals for this year, is that. So I'm happy to take it off, knowing that it's gonna continue to move forward. Because I do think efficiency sake, that is one of the most important things we need to talk about.
Yeah, I just, I don't want us to mandate it in your review. If you choose that it takes thirteen months to do it, I don't want you to be like, well, I didn't achieve it, you know, because you need to take the time, you need to make sure you present that plan to us, whatever that time may be, uh, as you're onboarding. That, that's just, you know, my one thing. And the last thing I want to say is, uh, my third point is, you know, thank you for doing the short-term, long-term goals. I think that's really helpful from an evaluation. I'm thinking about it from a year from now evaluation standpoint, that it's really nice to sort of say, was it achieved, was it achieved, was it achieved? And then really in the long-term goals, it's having you then be able to present to us and I think in that sort of pre-evaluation meeting that we, you know, talked about having and I think had, of what is the status of each one of the longer term goals? That way we can then evaluate as, you know, are we, are we moving on that? And then how do we, if, if as a board, we want to make that goal a higher emphasis goal, how do we make sure we note that to you in the following year? If we don't think it's moving fast enough? And that I think can be a better discussion there, uh, rather than have you achieved it or really sort of where is it? And, and is it moving fast enough? And do we, and you as a board then need to say to you, this is our number one priority, move this, you know, as, as fast as you can versus, you know, trying to balance it amongst the other goals? Otherwise, I really liked your short-term list, it really eliminated a lot of the ones that I was going to sort of raise. So I, I would, outside of that, I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Again, you had a thought?
I did. Oh, it was about the consolidation of the departments. I, I see what you're saying, Zach. I also feel like it is a big thing that will happen and I want her to get credit for that. And so that's part of it, right? It's like I, if she's working on all of this and, and doing all of this, I, I want to make sure that that is reflected accurately in her evaluation next year too, so.
Question, Madam Chair, on that?
Yeah.
Picking up on that, Mr. Burns, you're, uh, I like the concern you raised with number eight. Doesn't the same concern apply to number nine?
I would say if that's day-to-day, my answer would be yes.
Yeah. So, um, I think this is what Ms. Burchman-Michael is saying. Appreciating that you're sort of saying, Denise, that these are your goals. It doesn't say that. And I don't want to set, for lack of a better word, the precedent that the board is telling you to organize departments in certain ways. So maybe, uh, I, I think I'm in favor now. I wasn't five minutes ago, but now that Mr. Burns has raised his concerns, I think I'm in favor of taking out eight and not, with the understanding that these are things you plan on doing.
But that doesn't make, well, I'm gonna let Courtney say something.
So my comment to all of this is, I agree. And what I would love to see as part of this evaluation, if others agree with me, is an opportunity for Denise to say to us, so here's what I did last year. What I think is great about, you know, the goals that we met, the, the, you know, and here's what I think about the process. Here's, here, we started with this list and I, you know, did great over here and I, you know, wish I'd taken that one off the list, whatever it is. So that, so that you can highlight the things that aren't on the list and say, you know, because, because this was the comment I made the other day when we were talking about your performance evaluation. We didn't have a, a measuring tape for this past year. And I think that, um, because I have not lived with a structure and I don't really swim in, in this pool at all, I, I think it's useful to have a dialogue. I, I under, I agree that, that structure is, you know, I love ticking things off my list, my to-do list. At the same time, there are things that I don't write on it because I, I just can't tick them off on this weekly list or whatever, somehow there. And there are things that I never make it to the list because they're too important to even write down somehow. So I think it's useful to have this bigger conversation, which we did in the comments. But I just invite Denise's input as well to, you know.
I just want to say, when I was looking through the first very long list, I thought consolidating something that said more about, you know, the review, the structure and efficiency of various departments. Because that is actually something we really need you to do because no one's done it for a really long time. And this isn't, even if it was perfect ten years ago, maybe it's not the way things should be happening now. So I actually, in spite of the comments, I'd still like to put something on there, whether it's a sort of a mix of those two. I under, I hear what you're saying about the specifics, but I think having Denise focus, and, and I also understand what Courtney's saying, you know, it's not like this is the only things you can do next year. But on the other hand, having a critical eye based on your experience, especially, you know, of how things are run here, whether it's facilities because there's only, you know, one and a half people or cemetery and highway because it's not efficient anymore, you know, whatever it is. I, I feel like that's what I'd like to leave on the, on the goals list.
Oh, sorry, no.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
What if we had a category that says TA-initiated goals? That way, it's, you know, clear she gets credit for it. It solves my precedent problem. I, I do think there would be a problem if some future board says, we got a problem with the conservation department, just, you know, looking at their door. And the, the TA says, no, I think they're fine. But it goes into TA's goals to reorganize conservation, that is a problem.
Yeah.
That is a charter level problem.
Yeah.
So if we, I, I, I think we solve the problem, we just segregate it out, distinguish it as TA-initiated.
That's fine. Can I ask you just a process question for next year? Is the, and, and I guess what I would like to see from Denise is some kind of narrative. I think we're gonna evaluate her based on what we see. But I also would like to, for Denise to be able to have an opportunity to give to us how she feels she did on each one of these. Some kind of a paragraph or just a self-evaluation. I found, you know, working in nonprofits that that, that was really helpful, right? For, and we would, it would be, you know, my supervisor and myself. And we would both answer the same questions and then we would bring it to, you know, bring it to a, a meeting. And I'd be able to say, well, I did all of these things. And she'd say, well, I think you did all of these things. And, you know, there were, the truth would be somewhere in the middle. And so if, if that's something that, that Denise is willing to do, I think it would be helpful too because I don't think we see all the minutia of the things that she does.
For sure.
And I think that I, I really, in a year from now, want her to be able to say all of those things. Okay.
So Denise, yes. So I agree, I've actually tried to do that for the last three weeks and haven't been able to. I have the document up, every morning I come in, I look at it and I start to type and then there goes the rest of the day. And as several of you told me, I needed a better work-life balance. I am going to take that to heart and try and do that a little more. But I agree, I mean, I would love to, you know, I had like a first year self-reflection is what I had, and I started and then it just, quite candidly, this first year, I feel like so much has happened that for me to try and narrow that down to a narrative was what I struggled with. I really couldn't figure out what should be included and where I should start. Because it, quite frankly, it's been a whirlwind the last year.
Yeah.
And I think that's what I struggled with, is if they were like, you know, if I could look at this and say, absolutely, these are the things I can report on. But just trying to say like everything that's been done and, it was just, it was a lot to take in and trying to consolidate down, so. So that's why I didn't do that.
Can I make a suggestion? I also, I, I had two comments.
Anytime.
I'd be interested in, in seeing that if you do get around to doing it. And I'll just say, from personal experience, when I've gone through difficult periods in, in my career, taking a couple hours with the closed door and thinking about what was right, what was wrong, what I could do better. I never shared those documents. But, you know, that could be helpful. I just, I, I had two really quick comments. First of all, on, on track road, I don't care where it goes. I had suggested this to make the main point that if this becomes a thing, you need to have a leadership role. There should not be a planning board or a complete streets alone project. I think we all agree on that, where it goes, I don't really think matters. My only other comment is on the very last item and I'm surprised I didn't suggest this one. The work with library stakeholder, move library renovation project forward. I'd like to add in a financially responsible way because your, your unique contribution to that is going to be from that angle. And I also think having it in writing in your goals is something you can say to the committee and the advocates, look, this is what I've been tasked with doing, making sure it's financially responsible.
So while I was just moving things to the TA goal, I actually also moved the emergency management team since that's sort of something that would fall under me anyway. So I, so I will, um, I will do that. And then, so the traffic safety, so Ellen, you had requested the town-wide public safety rules. I add that under the traffic safety because it would fall under sort of their research. Do you want me to leave that under number seven if I'm taking off A, B, and C? I think you put it.
Yeah, I, I don't have, I didn't have a specific thing, so it, I think it's fine to just have the, to have D in there.
Okay, so just, we're just gonna leave that with just D?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could write a letter to the, directly to the committee.
Yeah, I mean, that's, right, I think.
So I thought about that.
We can all participate. My other, again, a little too specific is in terms of the green committee, Megan's suggestion around, you know, looking into plastic bag ban. I just, I feel a little, again, no, we haven't talked about who's gonna be on the committee from our board, but that's pretty specific, given the green committee's charge. And I, I don't know that I want to tie them into a specific, I don't, I don't think it's Denise's job to make sure that out of nowhere, we decide to have a plastic bag ban.
So, oh.
So that's, I just think that that's, that's not. I mean, I, you know, I think that was, it was somewhere else on, I have to find where it was on that, oh, because where is it? It was on here.
Which one?
It was on Zach's, it was on the original one, it was number five before. Oh, I, oh, you combined, right, she said it right, right. I mean, and I, again, I wasn't sure that was clear that the charge was for the next year. But, but to have, you know, to making progress towards the climate action plan, to me, that's more what we should be. I, I guess it, because it's a brand-new committee, I don't want to have anything really specific on that, so, yeah.
So the, the, there are a couple of reasons that I put this on. One was I, over the last year, have been contacted by multiple constituents saying that they want this. Um, and so I sort of have been sitting on it, sitting on it, sitting on it once the Green Committee started, um, and so I felt like this was a time to bring it forward. Also because it's not gonna be one of those things that is reinventing the wheel, literally, like we sit in the middle of all of these towns that have these plastic band bags, or bag bands. And so it felt to me like it was a very attainable goal, given that. I'm, I'm certainly, I'm not gonna go to the mat for it, if, if not everybody agrees, for sure, but I do think that it's something that like, we should get with the, if we're going to try and have a Green Committee and have all of these initiatives, this seems like fairly low-hanging for, to be able to, be able to check off a box.
May I ask a question? I, I interpreted that sentence to mean, um, work with them to determine, I interpreted literally, to determine the steps. And then I inferred, report back to us before an actual policy decision was made. Because I don't know whether I'm in favor of a plastic bag ban or not, it just hasn't been on my radar screen, and I would assume that there'd be a larger discussion with the Green Communities Committee, maybe somebody's against it.
I think it has to go to town meeting too. Like, it's not like, it's not like we're gonna be like, there's a plastic bag ban. It's just
Right.
And you're right, that is what I meant. I meant to get the ball rolling on it.
To, to just bring the issue up in a way that it can be dealt with.
Yes, exactly.
With that understanding, I'm okay with it, and I don't, I don't know that the wording here really needs to be changed. I mean, I'm, I, I think I'm kinda with you, is that, that I don't want to tell them to do it, because I don't know if I want to do it.
Right.
But I do think I'm okay with telling them, bring some stuff forward so we can deal with this.
Right. I guess, I, I li, particularly as a new committee, you know, they've been way up here, they're dealing with heat pumps and solar panels.
True.
And honestly, like, I don't want them just thinking about plastic bags. I mean, it feels like, let them talk about what they want their priorities to be. That's, you know, it could be a great thing, but
So I, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
Can we change the order in this goal, so that the plastic bag ban, um, you know, the, this determination is secondary in the sen, you know, in the paragraph to their, you know, completing a climate, climate action plan? Because I think you're right in that, they, they've got this big high-level stuff to do, and the plastic bag ban is, is a much more specific, um, task, and I, I kind of agree not, I don't want to tell them to do specific things, because I don't think that's their job, but I, I think that, reading it literally, I agree with Jim, you know, it's actually just, hey, it's on your list, you know, we, we're curious, you know, what is it gonna take to, to just put this through? But if we put it second, it doesn't, it's not like, okay, we want the plastic bag ban, and then by the way, what's happening with, you know, and everything else?
Climate. Denise, what were you gonna say?
Um, so I will just tell you that Sustainable Stow has been discussing this for quite some time, um, and they, uh, actually, John San Germana reached out, um, last year prior to town meeting, and they were contemplating putting them, um, a citizens petition to this board to get it added to the warrant. They decided not to do so. I assume they have all the steps, especially now that I think four of our members will be from, directly from Sustainable Stow.
Right, right.
I think that they're fairly close to that anyway, so I, I don't think that that will be a difficult, um, task for them to discuss. I, and I do, um, I think Ellen, you brought up, I did mean to check the minutes from when we created them, because I don't know if the mandate was within one year. I know that they're supposed to start it, but I don't know if they have to have it completed, so I, I will check on that, um, to see if they need to have that done.
I think it was, the way it reads, because I actually copied it earlier, um, is that it basically said the terms were for a year, uh, let's see, I haven't, I kept it, um, one-year appointments ending on June twenty-two, but the, the charge just says, well, assist the select board and town administrator in developing programs and projects to foster energy, conservation, energy efficiency, renewable energy generation, sustainable planning. Committee will be composed of dot, dot, dot. So it actually doesn't say specifically to have the, the work done, because I, I actually, I mean, the year, that would be pretty fast to have a, like, because we're talking about the entire town, thinking through all the different parts of town, so, um, I mean, I think working to, I don't know what the right wording is, but definitely, you know, coordinating with them to ensure they, they are developing that climate action plan, because that is, I think, I mean, I think that's key. And I think that's where they're going, is the group that's basically been to Sustainable Stow, so, I just don't want to, to be unrealistic about whether it can get done in a year or by June.
So what if it just says, coordinate with the Green Advisory Committee to ensure they are developing a climate action plan for the town of Stow. Additionally, work with the committee to determine what steps would need to happen in order to have a plastic bag ban in town.
I think that's great, yeah.
I'm just gonna note what Denise said.
Denise will provide.
Yes, I will send you all the final goals.
Any other, um, comments, questions? I mean, we didn't, you know, having heard the SMOAT thing, I don't know, I mean, affordable housing doesn't show up in here, but I, again, I don't know, it's a long-term goal, you know, especially, I mean, it's almost like the, what, I can't remember what you call it, housing
The housing production plan.
You know, to me, that's, that's key, but, um, I don't know, I mean, your role in it is, again, you're an advisor and someone who's gonna help them make things happen, but I don't know what else to put as a goal, so, yes.
I just wanted to comment on the, uh, plastic bag ban piece. I agree about not mandating them to do something or to approve something as part of the goals, but I think this is exactly the type of question we should start to feel very comfortable asking committees that we have in town that are experts in certain fields, is what are the steps to do something? And I think that's, that's where they can really help us and come back and present. So this is what our research has come up with, and they can work with Denise, and if it's a priority for us, we put it on Denise's goals, because we want to know what those steps are. And I think the great thing is, is that it's not, you know, we're, we're, we're asking them merely to do the research for us as experts, and I think, you know, that's, that's wonderful, and, and I think we can maybe start to use this as a model of, of thinking across all of our committees, right? When they do come to us, what, what are our questions? You know, how could you help us understand something, uh, more? Because, you know, the SMOAT presentation was, was incredibly good for me to feel like I was updated, you know, actually answered a lot of my questions I had before walking in, which was great. Uh, but I think this is what we, we should be thinking about, is how we can reach out to our committees and ask this style of question, because I, like Mr. Selby, read that very literally and thought, that's actually a really good question, and I liked it. But I do agree with the, the flipping of it, because I think the, the key thing is the climate action plan, uh, and, you know, I added a year because I think it's one of, if not the most important things that we have in our committees that are being worked through, uh, because we have new state, you know, we have new state laws coming down, we need to really figure out this issue that may overlay a lot of our financial decision-making and a lot of other pieces of the pie. So for me, I see it as connected with the longer-term goal I proposed about the capital, the twenty-year capital plan is, this is gonna form a layer on that, and until we get this capital, you know, this climate action plan together, it's gonna be tough for, I think, frankly, you Denise, to, to model what that really is going to look like in terms of our solutions of how we're going to achieve the state mandates while still trying to do that. Uh, so that's, that's sort of why for me, I prioritize it, I'm comfortable removing it, because I understand that it may not be their mandate. I would like to emphasize that for me, uh, this liaison really is to be a, you know, to, to be a, to, to push them to move as quickly as they reasonably can to get a good plan, right? I'm a fan of, of quality over, over speed, but I think in this case, we need quality and speed, uh, because I think we are really behind the ball here on having a climate action plan, probably should have had one five years ago. And so for me, it's about playing a little bit of catch-up on that, on that clock and asking, you know, our amazing, uh, folks who are gonna be on the committee to, to try to meet a, a pretty quick clock, and having you sort of help them and work with them, and, and maybe provide that, you know, staff resources if needed to sort of help them coordinate could, could be helpful to that committee in, in moving just, you know, efficiently. So, um, that's why I had that there, I'm comfortable removing it though, but I, I think if that's the understanding of sort of why it's there, then I feel very comfortable with it.
Madam Chair, I have your ready for motion.
That, I just wanted to say, one, that just raises for me, I mean, you, you hit a key, but small but significant thing, which, you know, we create committees and we don't give them staff support, and it makes a huge difference for speed. I mean, you know, SMOAT's been running for fifteen years without any staff support to the point where, you know, they have to come and physically post their own meetings because they can't get anybody in town building to, to support them. So, um, that is something I had sworn two years ago, when I was on here again, I wasn't gonna let happen, and I just realized I let it happen, but, um, so I, you know, I mean, you have a better sense of staffing, um, and I think you're willing to work with committees more than previously, but, uh, I would say, I, because I think that would make a big difference for the Green Committee, to know who they can turn to to get the most basic support, so. With that
I would just second that quickly and say that I, you know, I mean, I know that there are some people that in, at present or in the past have, um, you know, done hours for, for different groups, and, you know, even an hour or two a week can make a difference to some committees, um, probably, just that, like that person in the, in the building who can post, or something like that, or somebody to do minutes. You know, especially if, if any of the existing staff wants, you know, a little bit more. And I trust that, that you and Dolores are gonna figure that all out anyway.
That's right, your team.
Yes, although I would say the minutes part is tricky, um, you know, having, providing staff support
Oh, yeah.
for all the boards to have their minutes done is, is a huge undertaking. I see what it takes for, you know, Joyce to do the minutes for these meetings. And yes, I, this sort of goes into another larger conversation that at some point we will be having about changing our official posting place to be the website and not the message board out front, the paper board out front, um, so that we can streamline, that there can be someone here that can take an agenda and put it on the website, and it's officially posted, not require, you know, my staff to stop what they're doing, go make photocopies, go downstairs, find a key, put it on the board. To me, no one stands out there and looks at the board. I know you did when we were closed, I do know you, but, but that's because not everything's posted on the website.
Right.
You know, if everything's posted on the website, people don't need to stand out there and make notes and
Yeah, it's really important
Exactly.
for the public to know what's going on.
Exactly, and we have committees that only post outside and do not post on the website, and, you know, those are the things that if we made the official posting place the website, um, and that's something I am working with and will continue to work with the town clerk on, um, and I, and I know the downside, that if the website goes down, you know, in my ten years plus of having the website be the designated site, it's happened once, that there was a entire East Coast outage of the, the hosting company, and yes, meetings had to be postponed, but, um
Jim and I went to a regional meeting shortly thereafter, and everybody was complaining about how all their postings were completely messed up, and we're like, ours were good, they're in paper in a little box in the front of the building.
And the benefits are huge.
The benefits are huge.
It will happen, it will happen.
It will.
That's right.
It will.
The benefits of it are huge.
Yes, I will just raise the accessibility hand here for people who don't have access to websites or the financial means to do it, and so I just, I always want to sort of put my hand up there and just make sure that we are also keeping that in mind.
Which I can agree with.
Because I'm all about, trust me, I'm all about getting rid of that, but at the same time, I do like to have some kind of a backup plan for making sure everybody can do it.
I agree with, but on the flip side, I don't know if I told you the story, that when I left one day, it was pouring rain, it was winter, and there was a man dragging the, the bin outside that we have the letters for the bulletin board to stand on with his flashlight, trying to read the postings, because things are not on the website. And so the accessibility issue is the other way, that if someone came up in a wheelchair, they can't see what's in those boards.
That's true.
That issue, I, I deal with that, that issue's becoming very, very difficult. There, it's there, but when you insist, for example, that somebody has to come to your office to get a form.
Yes.
That is a severe, physical, you know, now, back in the day, everybody did it because there was no choice, but you'll get eighty-five-year, I mean, I, I work at a retirement system, for God's sake, and they'll, like, you'll get eighty-five-year-old people saying, why are you dragging me down to downtown crossing in Boston?
Right.
When you could put this on a website. So it, but it, it goes both ways, I know.
Yeah, yeah, we can talk about this for hours, but
And I would just say, when I'm talking about support is not taking minutes, because every nonprofit in the world takes their own minutes, they don't, you know, you don't need help on that. I think it's more, you know, sometimes just the logistics of, you know, how do I connect to someone or whatever, so that's, yeah. Okay, so, um, are we gonna vote on these as we've, as the sort of, we have a sense of them?
As discussed.
Or do, do people, are people comfortable that we've discussed, we might not see, we're gonna see a final copy next time, but would we rather wait or vote on these?
No, I don't wanna wait. I think we should
We will.
All right.
My only question is to Denise, and whether you have clear enough instruction from the board, and I know you've been over there flipping sections as we've been talking, but I just want to make sure you have a clear enough instruction, that if we vote now, it's, it's clear for you and you feel comfortable that you're not posting something you don't think we've approved.
No, excuse me, thank you. Uh, no, I do feel comfortable, I feel like there was not that many changes, that I would be lost in it, um, I have made them as we've gone along, so I am confident that the final document that I will send out is exactly what we've discussed.
If something gets screwed up, we can redo it, I, I wanna get this done.
All right, go for it then, please make motion, Mr. Selby.
And I'm just gonna use the, the word here as defined, because we have verbally defined. Madam Chair, I move to approve the town administrator's goals as defined at the meeting of September fourteen, twenty twenty-one, uh, with a completion date of August thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Oh, that sounds very difficult.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, we have goals.
I still have a complete date until it
I do too, I, I don't
Well, it'll be done next month, you can't
Okay, so now we have disposition of surplus goods and equipment without value from the planning department.
None of the new things are working.
Yeah, some nice ancient, you know, collector items, printers, and, uh, I can't remember if there was, I always love these, because it's like, oh yeah, I used to have one of those, I probably still do, no, but, yeah.
The twenty, the two thousand and four printers, yeah.
Yeah, right, great. Any questions, or Denise, I mean, this seems pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, there is no value to these, we'd just like to get rid of them and get some space.
Make them officially gone.
Are they from the Jimmy Carter era?
That's what we'll start defining everything by, which president they were, yeah, right, okay. Would you like to make a
I'll wear a green leisure suit if somebody wants me to.
We're white, we're frills, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I move to declare a surplus, the goods and equipment on the list provided by the planning board valued at less than ten thousand dollars and belonging to the town, and to authorize the disposal of these surplus items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy, all right. Okay, um, let's see. Oh, so now we're on the Green Advisory Committee appointee, or, so, um, as Denise pointed out, we had two more applicants that came in, I think, after the
And in fact, so we've received more even since then, um, so.
Okay, so, so the question before us right now is, we can, we have two choices, we can appoint someone from our board to be a member of the committee, or we can, um, decide that we're gonna pick from the people who have continued to apply, um, as someone, as our representative. I at first had thought, well, isn't this in the same category as our liaisons, where we will, they're gonna still report to us, so do we need to have an actual member on it? And especially if there's other people, um, who are interested, but Denise pointed out that we'd have to then be working with that person, because they really are representing us, as opposed to just being a, a third at-large member. So, um, I will open that, uh, discussion up for the board. But what, I mean, I, there's a strong feeling one way or the other, and, and if someone's interested in being on the committee, because that would be the other, if we don't have anybody who wants to do it, then.
Right, so if I can say, the, so the other boards that you've designated, I believe they have all selected a current board member or an associate to participate on their behalf. So yes, as, as Ellen pointed out, I would say if you do choose to appoint a, um, a[1749.66] a representative, I would make sure you then schedule regular updates every couple of months with that person because, again, they represent your interest on that committee. We have the at-large members and the other boards would be represented, so that's my only comment. However you wanna proceed, we will handle. But I am, if no one here wants to serve on it, we can find a suitable representative for you.
I'd be happy to sign my clone up to serve.
Okay. So I get the, I mean, does people's thoughts about it being, is this different or the same as the liaison thing that we sort of threw out? Because it's a committee that reports to us.
This seems a lot like me being on the library building committee or on LACAC or Zach being on capital planning. I have, given that we just put two tasks on the town administrator's goals and priorities that involve the Green Committee, I would have a preference for a board member doing it. I, when I lived in Marshfield, I was the selectman's representative to the MBTA Advisory Committee and we did not have a regular schedule. And I lost touch with them, they lost touch with me. I would try to get on their agenda, they didn't have time, it wasn't important. It didn't work out well. It didn't work out well. You know, of course, if we don't, we could have a meeting with whoever we want and say, okay, every three months it's gonna come in. But if it's that important, I don't know why a board member, unless nobody wants to do it. That's understandable.
But there is that part that, you know, some of these committees, we we do expect to have a new way of having them report, you know, communicate with us on a regular basis. That was sort of the idea of getting rid of liaisons because we were not necessarily hearing what the committee was doing unless the liaison decided to report. So I I'm, but not to say that this is, I mean, you know, we do have places that we are actual members of the committee.
So when we, I don't remember, when we created this, did we say select board representative?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, no, I apologize. I think it said, I think they were all board members or designated.
Member appointed by the.
Appointed by, yes, so that if you really wanted to put somebody else in that position, it gave you the option.
And like planning board could choose someone.
Right, I think you raise a good issue, but I think we answered it then. We apparently made that decision to make this more in the class of capital planning and library building.
Right.
Not like S M O T, well, actually we have a select.
Not S M O T, right.
Not like, help me out here, open space. Lake Boone.
Yeah. Right, recreation, like, right, this would be a voting member of the committee versus a liaison.
I do, so I guess I lean towards those kind of committees where we don't have a staff member who is, so like planning board, we have the planning department, CONCOM, we have the CONCOM. And so ones where we sort of have more oversight, like the select board does, because it's not, it's not a day-to-day operation, then I do think it's important to have a select board member. Or a select board member, actually. Having said that, I I'm not throwing my, I'm trying really hard this year to not volunteer for everything.
Learn to say no.
Um, learning to say no. Lower Village is gonna be my priority for that, so. But I do think it's important, Mr. Climate Change.
Yes. Mr. Burns.
I've been thinking a lot about this committee with my own background, obviously, being in environmental sciences and having done significant work in in this field. My my initial urge was to not raise my hand because I'm on capital planning and I think that is a significant commitment as as the board's representative there to ensure that we're really thinking about what it is. I'm, I I think it's really one of these things where my hope was that boards would appoint members of the community in their stead because we have such a deep bench of expertise in this town on this issue. Uh, that my concern is that if the, if it truly is a committee full of other committee members, I think we would be remiss as a board ourselves to not have somebody there who can represent the board. Kind of a little unfortunate because I was hoping with all of these people writing in that, and with these just amazing backgrounds in all of these fields and that we would have a group of residents who would be gung ho and really helping all of our boards do this. So I'm a little disappointed in that because I think it puts us in in a in a tough spot. Because I I hear Mr. Salvi's comments and and I hear, you know, your comments. And I was thinking, this is the battle that I was I was doing. I I think I would say that if the board thinks that somebody should be on the committee from this board, you know, I would raise my hand and say that I'd be comfortable doing it if nobody else is because I do think I would have a substantive background to contribute. And but I I struggle with that in in my concept of what it means to be a board representative, which is it's representing the board. And so I just wanna make sure that I'm as transparent as possible that, you know, because of my own background, I have my own interests in in pushing what I think would be fair and equitable concerns specifically around social justice issues and and climate justice because I think that's one of the most important things of of what we have. So as long as the board is is comfortable with sort of my disclosures there, you know, I would say that I wouldn't feel comfortable for this year stepping on if we would like a board member. But again, I I only do this very reluctantly because I I strongly believe that with the depth of talent in this space in our community, I am slightly disappointed that we're not using this this amazing expertise in our town and letting them run with this because I know that all the people that applied and seeing these letters could just do an amazing job.
I'm I'm confused. I mean, I haven't seen that people who've been appointed by the committees have, are they not people who have any background in this?
It's it's mere that they're representing, that they're actually board members. So they're actually from the boards themselves that we signed up. And I think that there is a need that if boards are putting their own board members on, I do think that having a board member from our committee would be very helpful because then it becomes really a collective board conversation with residents there. Which I think may be an important thing to to have, especially as we're building a a climate action plan and really seeing this as a collaborative space. So, you know, I I sort of leave it at that because I'm, I still am on the fence. But if this board thinks that we should have a board member because I think of very valid and reasonable concerns of wanting to make sure that if the other boards have put a board or an associate on there, that we're also trying to sort of make sure that we're having the right level of conversation on the committee, then I would say that I I would be okay with moving forward and putting my 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 name out there unless somebody else wants to. But it sounds like that answer is no. But if the board would like to move with a resident, I would also feel comfortable supporting that and doing that. I sort of leave it, I think, to the to the board to decide that.
So I guess I just wanna be clear, I, we have amazing expertise on these boards. The, some of the people you're talking about are already on these boards. So it it sounds a little like you're dismissing just because they're appointing someone from their committee that they aren't the right people.
Oh, no, I I shouldn't be, make very clear, I'm not saying this at all.
Well, I just wanna be clear that that, because we don't have the names. But, you know, just because, I mean, we wrote this charge so we can't, you know, if they decide to put someone from their committee on it, they presumably are having the same discussion we would have, it's like we want people with expertise, so.
If I mean, Madam Chair, just to be very clear, I am in no way suggesting that there are not experts from these committees. As I, because we have such a deep talent, I know that there are board members with this talent because of just how deep our environmental talent is. My only concern is, and and it's a concern about how we are choosing our own process, nothing about their process. We intentionally set it up the way we did to provide for that concern. So it's not about expertise of the members that are stepping on it all. In fact, I would assume that each one of these boards has an environmental expert who's who stepped up or an associate. That that's not my concern. My concern is because they've chosen to do a voting member of their committees that we have to consider that as part of our appointment because I think that's an important way for us to make sure that the committee is gonna be as productive as possible with this board. So it's purely about our own decision-making. In no way, shape or form am I saying that any of the other committees did it wrong. I think they did it the way they thought was best and and based on who was sitting at the table and and wanted to do it. This is an exciting committee and I think a lot of people would wanna be on it. I think as this board, we're all focusing very much on a lot of goals that need to be done. And so we're trying to make sure our time is well-spent. And so I wanna make that very clear, that this is is not any affront to any committee that chose to put it on there. This is about how our board is making a decision. And and I and I really deeply, and I've been thinking about for many weeks, Mr. Salvi's point with regards to, is this a member of our board or is this somebody we'd like to appoint? And and I was hoping it would be an easy choice because if other member, if other committees had chosen a resident, I think it would be very easy to say, then we should also put a resident. And I would feel very comfortable with that decision. But I feel uncomfortable the other decision of a board member being on there because we are all very busy and trying to work with the committees we've all stepped up to already represent. And I wanna make sure that we have sufficient time in those committees to make sure that they're moving forward. So it's more of a time concern for me.
I was gonna say, I do think the way that we get around that is that we set a calendar for how we have that person come back and report to us. And I think, so I do think that we we're, we don't have to be stuck if we say to them, we need you to report to us every two months or whatever. And and so I I guess I have a practical kind of question. We've got two in front of us right now, you've said we've had multiple more. Do we wanna table, can we table this discussion so that we can really have a better sense that we're not going between two people, but we have more people to choose from for this? Because right now, the two people that we have in front of us definitely have had some experience in various committees in these towns and and I think either one of them could fit. I would be interested personally to see additional, the additional people that have come forward. I don't know if we're bound by timing or when we said that we needed to do this by. And so I guess that's my question.
They had wanted.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the goal was to have them start meeting as soon as possible. We had picked sort of mid-September to have all of the appointments made so that they could meet.
Okay.
But quite frankly, if it's another meeting, if they wait two more weeks, I don't think it's, I don't think they'll be able to organize and meet anyways before your next meeting.
Okay.
So if you choose not to have a member of this board, we could certainly set up a, you know, brief because there'll be several of them.
Right.
Brief interview, I guess, with the candidates that you have for the representative position.
Okay.
Or even just a chance to to read all of them comparatively, sort of, here they all are.
Yeah.
You know, I'm kinda interested in the conversation because what I'm also, I mean, maybe a different way of saying it is, you know, I feel like part of what Zach is saying is that the conversation is, it's it's a slightly different conversation when you have all re, people that are already members of existing boards and committees in the room together talking about what we're gonna choose than it is when we, you know, what I what I like about if if other boards and committees had chosen an outside representative, it invites more people into the process of volunteering. And I always think that's a great idea because I find it, I found it surprisingly very rewarding. And, you know, once you put your foot in, it turns out to be quicksand. And there we have another dedicated person in the town having the fun of participating in our our process. So it's a way of 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 having greater opportunity for those who aren't perhaps yet involved in as or as heavily committed as some of us are. I think at this point, I would be happy either way with the board's choice.
Jim, did you?
Yeah, I just wanna, I don't know how clear we made it to the other committees that we preferred that they nominate a resident as opposed to a member of the board. I don't think, if if we want to see more of that kind of thing, boards nominating residents as opposed to the same people who sit on boards, then I don't think the fact that the other boards nominated their board members prevents us from doing it. In fact, it may kind of be a way to lead on that sort of issue. Now I understand it a little bit better, I'm fine with it. My only question is, this is for the chair, I guess the chair and the TA. You know, normally I I expect very brief interviews. If we have multiple candidates, I I don't think we can pick because we don't even have the emails from some candidates. I mean, we can't pick tonight. I I don't know whether you just wanna have resumes. I would like to make sure that everybody under, that whoever we pick understands that we highly value this and we expect some regular communication with at least the town administrator and on occasion with the board itself and instruct them on how to do that. Because they may not know. So frankly, I'd be in favor of very brief Zoom interviews. I would tell you that means picking one person and disappointing like three others comes with the big salary that we get.
Well, and I would also say that, you know, there's nothing to stop them from asking to be an associate to the Green Advisory Committee. So if anyone really wants to actively participate, they certainly still could in an advisory role.
They can also show up at the meeting.
Yeah, right, exactly.
How I got started.
I'm, I I actually think that, you know, to what you just said, Jim, I think it actually would be a great statement of the select board to say, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna look for a a resident to represent us. I mean, I I think just by the way we phrase the, I'm looking at the posting, that's why I keep looking at my computer. But, you know, we said a point, a member appointed by X board. And we're presuming that means that that person sort of knows what that board is doing. So it is hard to say, particularly like Z B A, you know, hey Courtney, will you represent us on the on the Green Committee? Well, I I mean, maybe that's not a good example because she probably knows more about Z B A than some people do. But, you know, it's a hard thing to try to feel like you're suddenly representing. Now, if there's a select board, well, we're sort of generalists, so we're not asking them to to represent us in what we're talking about. They're just gonna be, they're representing us, meaning they're gonna come back on a regular basis and talk to us. So in some ways, we have it easier than the than the other committees.
Yeah.
Try to see where that, it's a challenge. I mean, something, you know, some of them, planning board, I mean, they, it takes years to to get comfortable with what planning board does, right? So, you know, to to feel like you're supposed to represent them on a climate committee or a green committee could be a challenge. But that having said, I, so I would, I would make a proposal, and I'm not making the motion, but that we that we do post a very brief, short window. I'd actually say that we ask for, you know, sort of, you know, complete cover letter resume and then we ask Denise to choose two or three max that we would interview at the next meeting. I don't know how many, I mean, we don't know how many people are gonna apply, but given that we already have five or six at this point.
But so you wanna repost it or you wanna use the ones that we've already received in anticipation of the original posting?
Though, I, we don't have to repost it necessarily, but I know, having spoken to someone on a sustainable sto today, that there was confusion about the deadline. And so I just wanna send out an email today that says, we'll we'll still accept applications through tomorrow. Because some someone, at least one person was told, don't bother because it's too late. So I just wanna, I don't wanna, that that's what I'm concerned about. And also, I mean, we need to also, I guess, I'm sort of thinking out loud. But we do need to make it clear that this is a specific expectation that the select board is gonna expect you to report back to us as well as go into the meetings on a regular basis. And I don't know if that changes people's expectations or not.
No, but I would say if we're posting it, there's a two-week requirement for board committee and employee, it's, yeah. So if we use the original posting, we can, I mean, through tomorrow is fine. I mean, I, we, through the end of the week, if they're gonna be on your next agenda. But I think certainly people have expressed an interest to be an at-large member. This really isn't any different, they're an at-large member, but focusing on communicating with this board.
I think we can make their role clear in the interviews.
Okay.
So, so just so I'm clear, we're really talking about tabling this matter pending some form of interview of all the applicants? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just say that I don't think I should be narrowing it down with representing you. I mean, this, they are really representing the five of you on this committee. I really do think anyone who comes, submits it, you should at least have a brief interaction with. You know, versus just being appointed to serve.
Yep.
There, it it should be someone that I may feel is not the right fit, but you all may say, this is the person we want to represent us. So I would prefer that anyone who applies gets put in this category to meet with you.
And is the deadline tomorrow? So Madam Chair, could I make a motion? Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I move to table this matter pending interviews at our, well, pending interviews in a manner to be determined by the chair and the town administrator of, at our next meeting of all applicants, of all persons, all residents who applied for this position for the selectman's representative position on the Green Advisory Committee through tomorrow. I think that makes sense.
I'll second that.
But they're actually applying for the at-large position, the ones that have applied so far. So we wanna include them.
I thought they were, I thought this is for the selectman's representative.
Well, they didn't know there was such a thing.
Right, everyone's just applying to be on the committee.
I'll amend my motion to be a selectman's representative position and/or the at-large position.
I I repeat my second.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
So then Ellen, we'll talk about how long you're gonna tell people, or if you wanna have a format for that.
Right, I will.
But we'll reach out to the, the ones that have applied tomorrow, and any other ones we receive, we'll reach out to.
Great. Okay. Uh, okay, let's see. Oh, so now we're on Code of Conduct that we, um, discussed last time. It was a draft and a packet. Denise, do you wanna add anything to that?
Uh, so this was the, um, Code of Conduct that you guys, um, selected. There were, excuse me, a couple of proposed amendments that I've included in there. Um, otherwise, there's nothing, nothing has changed from the version you saw last time, except, and of course, now I won't remember which ones I added. There were two or three points from other policies that you wanted to see in here, so.
I think it looks great. It's nice to have a roadmap.
Yep.
Just a couple of things, uh, that I wanted to just raise for consideration. Um, maybe I'll start with number four C, which is enforcement. I wasn't sure about including this one in here, just because I believe this is just the right of the chair at-large of running a meeting, that if somebody has a warning for, for this, that the chair can actually request their removal even outside of this policy, it's actually, uh, uh, it's actually an open meeting law. So I wasn't sure that we needed it in, in this policy, because that is, and always is, the chair's purview to do exactly this topic. If we wanted to have it in here, just as sort of a noting to folks that there's gonna be some, you know, enforcement for, I think, the members at large, I'm fine with it. But just wanted to note that that was one of, of my concerns. The second one was, is there a difference in, in, to the town administrator between sort of Sudbury's, um, governance and ours? Because I noticed they use the word not administrative or executive. And the difficult part I have is rectifying that in the charter language, where the chart, our charter declares us as the chief executive officers. So I wanna be careful on this policy to make sure that we're, you know, i- if our governance systems are the same, and we think that they are the same, that I wanna keep the language, because that means they, you know, worked through it, and I think that it's fine. But I wanted to make sure that I was, we weren't sort of carving out what our charter does say is this role. I'm not sure what that means, because, um, for me, like, you, the day-to-day, and that, and so that's like the carry-out thing from the next sentence that I also sort of highlighted to myself in one C, was like, you know, you carry it out, right? You carry out the, the board's, you know, policies. And so I wanted, I was just trying to divide it better based on, on what we said, um, in terms of that. So I was thinking of sort of striking the or-executive, and under two C, also as the chief executive officer, since we technically, that is technically our title under the charter, and unless the charter changes, then we can obviously amend the policy. And so those two I wanted to, to strike, that was one, be the or-executive, or two C, the as the chief executive officer phrasing, because that actually is our role under the charter. Um, and then, like I said, one C was the and-carry-out. I wanted to delete that, because I think that actually gets into your purview and the policy.
Was that which one?
Uh, two, a one C, and the phrase and-carry-out, because that is your purview. So if we enact a policy, the carrying out of the policy itself really is, I think, a different thing from abiding by, which I think is that civility aspect that I think we're talking about, which is with the boards made a decision, the boards made a decision, we abide by it, we move on. Uh, and so, uh, that was that. And then I had one more, which was one F. And that is, um, I really didn't like the phrasing of with no intent to play politics in any sense of the word. It really was a, in my opinion, a a, a sort of a separate way of, of, I think, trying to, to get at something, but it was very different from the way that everything else is worded. And it seemed more just sort of like they had an issue and they threw this in. And, and so that, that whole sort of one F thing, I sort of started to question. I, I like the unselfish public policy. I think that the point is, you know, we are not benefiting personally, that's an ethical guideline for us. But that, that was one, just, that sort of phrasing, I just didn't think really was hitting our, our core civility issue that we were trying to, you know, address by putting this in place and, and doing this. So I, I was contemplating maybe just removing that, because I didn't think it reflected where, where we're at as, as our own community, and I think maybe reflected more of the, of the policy form that we, uh, chose for, for Denise to update. Um, otherwise, I was, I thought this was amazing. I thought this really hit a lot of the issues on reflection from our last meeting especially, and outside of those, I would, I would be ready to, to move.
Can I make one?
Sorry.
I didn't, so sorry, did you have?
No, I did. I, I did have a question about four C, and, and it's only because I can see a situation we are not in right now. But I can see a situation in the future where you've got a chair who is vehemently opposed to another person who has been elected. And they determine that a disagreement is them behaving in an inappropriate manner, or unruly or disorderly, and removing them from the meeting. I'm not suggesting that this is a situation where Ellen's going to throw someone out for disagreeing with her at all. But it makes me really nervous that we could have a board in the future that is, that there are political differences where someone feel, who is in the chair position feels like, you know what, I'm just gonna toss you out because this is how I'm feeling. So, that's, that's where that one made me a little uncomfortable, because I don't know that that's the chair. I, I understand in a meeting, that's the chair's role to keep order, but I don't know that it's the chair's role to throw another elected official out of a room. Because they don't appreciate the way that they're behaving.
But didn't Zach say that was, it's already listed in some?
It is.
Oh.
Quite frankly, it's happened. I've been at meetings, I just had to physically have a member of the audience, and quite frankly, someone else sitting at the table, removed from meetings.
The audience members, I'm fine.
Disruptive and unruly and yelling and throwing things, and, um, and after multiple warnings, they've said, either you leave or I'm calling the police to remove you, uh, because it does happen unfortunately. But it is part of the open meeting law, and it is the right of the chair anyways.
Okay.
Then I.
And I, I think that when that is the case, that culturally, there's a lot going on, and it is, you know, why we, why we're, you know, putting this in place, but it's also, like, it's already a bigger, it's already bigger. Okay, if you, if, if it's gotten to that point on the board especially, and, you know, when, when we all allow our politics to make us enemies to each other, you know, it's, it's a moment when, uh, I think our, it's, it's a blow to our humanity, and we're, you know, so I just, it's bigger than, than this policy.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jim, you wanted to, go ahead.
When you, when you elect somebody chair, you, you give him that power, and you, you trust him with it, you, you trust him with the power to throw out a member of the audience. I actually didn't know that it's, it's in the open meeting law, they can throw out a member of the board.
Anyone. Anyone who's disruptive to a meeting can be removed at the chair's discretion for being unruly or inappropriate.
I see some value in this. Because it is un, it was unclear to me that a person, that you could throw out someone elected to be at that table. And I think to have a policy which represents the agreement of the members, that this is how we will govern, so if, if nothing else gives me that authority, this does. And in today's environment, oh, I think it's just a matter of time, unfortunately, before it happens, maybe not in this town, but, but close. I, I've heard stories too, so.
And it was a political debate during the 2016 presidential campaign, when things got so ugly that
Right.
The, the police were watching our meetings, cause they knew they would have to come over and deal with it, because it was just every meeting, you have just someone that was out of their mind. So it does happen unfortunately.
And I'm hoping, you know, sort of to Megan's example, that if it was really sort of egregious action by the board, uh, by the chair, that other members of the board would say, let's take a, you know, sort of like we, we grabbed done our two meetings ago, right? Let's take a five-minute break, you know, and because, cause that, you know, that's where, I mean, it's sort of, that's all part of the commitment here, right? That we're gonna say, we're all in this together, and we're gonna make sure that, you know, doesn't lose control.
So I, I take back my point. But, but I do, I, understanding all of that, that does make a lot of sense, because taking it through the lens of this is an agreement that we're all agreeing to together, and.
Great. Um, so back to Zach's, so, um, all, all I know about Sudbury is that they have a town manager, not a town administrator. And ours is the chief administrative officer, right? That's your title, or that's your charter title, whatever.
So the changes I currently have that were requested are, um, under one B to remove or executive at the end of that sentence. Under one C to remove and carry out. Um, I'm not entirely sure on one F if you want it to end after play politics or before play politics.
I, I just like taking it out.
Yeah, the tone really is, it's such a different tone.
So public service, or to benefit personally from their select board activities.
Nah. Public service.
I think, yeah.
No, I said after public service, take out with the.
You should add anything else.
Just stop at public service.
End the sentence at public service.
Oh, you don't wanna keep that or benefit personally from their select board activities?
Yeah, really, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll do that. Um, remove two C.
Uh, s- sorry, not, not remove two C, but, um, yeah, actually, that would be, wouldn't it? Cause it's declaring you as the chief executive, which we can't, which we shouldn't be doing.
Um, and then that's it, cause we're gonna keep enforcing those with the changes that have been proposed.
Yep.
I think that's great.
Great, getting that policy. Okay, any other comments? Otherwise.
I did wanna make one comment, which was, um, in the last conversation, we, we had Madam Chair, you, I think, in a very wonderful way, and, and sort of the spirit of this, sort of asked a question to me about what my intent was behind a sentence. And I wanted to say that I thought that was amazing, and I wanted to recognize that in light of this policy, cause that's what this policy, I think, is trying to get us to do, is to really say, you know, are you meaning, are you trying to, you know, is this an implication I can think of? I wanna clarify, I loved, you know, your clear question, and I think the rest of the board, I, I could see was wanting to respond to it as well, and thinking about how we were, you know, interpreting, you know, what was likely a very unclear statement from me, of trying to express a comp, a very complicated, multi-week thing. So I wanted to say thank you for that, because I, I think it really meets in the spirit of this, of this policy, and I hope that we can continue to, to build this policy in, in our actions.
Okay, um, well, take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the Select Board Code of Conduct policy as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Great, all right, that's awesome. Um, the only other thing I wanted to just raise on the sort of strategic planning section was, um, do we want, we have two sort of dates we talked about, and I just wanted to see if we nailed down either one. One was to get a, a second planning session on the calendar sometime after town meeting, now that we know town meeting is at the end of October. Um, and then the second one was that budget meeting, that we played around with dates, but I wasn't sure if we decided if we had the right date. Um, so, so I guess first, on second planning session, like, we had talked about sort of halfway through the year, which is roughly December, but December might be a horrible month to do that, though it is a short month in terms of meetings. Uh, we only have the one. So we could do it on December seventh. It seems like that's the right time to do it, I think. You know, it's, it's, it's gonna be a check-in of where we were from July to, to December, and then, I mean, I don't know that we'll get too much into specifics of town meeting, but just sort of, it gives us a chance to, to stop and do a check-in on how we're progressing on our work plan. Does that make sense? December seventh?
So this is a planning session?
Think so, yes.
I would love that, uh, because I, in particular, I would love to discuss how we can form, the ability to, to undertake more of these policies, uh, and, and I think now that we've sort of worked through some of, some of the initial processes, you know, how we can really think about, like, scheduling out, you know, put a topic on the agenda, vote to have Denise help us draft something, three meetings later, based on goals, like, we get something back. You know, then like, our, our sort of scheduling of, of meeting, you know, to talk about it first, and then sort of the approval meeting. And I think trying to get that sort of like routine under us, and if we could focus on that on the seventh, I think that would be a great timing to do that, since we're gonna be after that battling, uh, budget season and, and more. I think setting some structure in this meeting could be very helpful as we try to balance our time in the best way we can with the other.
Denise, does that work on your schedule?
It does. I have to look at, um, the agendas. I know we do the licensing renewals at that meeting.
On this schedule, it says on the fourteenth, we would be, the seventh would be an off week, cause we only.
Oh, the seventh is an off week. Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's the following way to use the license. Right, that's, see, I remember Zach had talked about keeping this in his notebook. I'm like, dude. There you go, so, um, okay, so we got that, that's excellent. Um, and then the other thing we, um, we've talked about, you know, the joint, basically joint boards meeting, lack of a better word, on the sort of budget. And now that we do have town meetings set, what makes sense for, to doing that? Um, obviously, we have to get through town meeting, which is gonna come up in no time, cause it's scary how fast September's flying.
So I have, I have a comment there.
Yes.
Seems to me, I don't know how we accomplish this, but we, um, one of the important things is that CPC has gotten, you know, Smart just mentioned getting an application to them, so their deadline is, is stated as December first. And a lot of people think, okay, well, I'll just wait till before December first, and then get my stuff in. It would probably be the most useful if CPC has as much information as possible, since some of these other guys, like, already have it. You know, but CPC's had this different style, and I think they're being forced to look at a different way to, to do things. So I don't know how to check in with them, or how to poke the people that might be giving them stuff, but.
Well, and that's, and, and we've sort of, I mean, I don't know that we've been a hundred percent clear on what our goals of this session was, except for that we wanted to sort of have the, the sort of key bodies, you know, meeting committee bodies in the room to, before we get into the depth of, of the budget. Cause I don't want it to become a meeting where we're gonna talk or hear from CPC, cause that, that would put too much pressure on them, and that's not our job. I mean, CPC is functioning. We, we wanna, we wanna have them in the room as we all talk about the restrictions for the year, what it's, what the financial picture looks like, what Denise's thoughts are. Uh, what are, what are you thinking about in terms of this? You know, given what we've talked about in the past, what, how do you think this would, this should be structured?
So I have a difference of opinion, cause I don't think CPC should be part of that conversation, if we're talking about budget season. They have a separate pot of funds, they have a separate budget, they don't care if we have no revenue coming in, it really doesn't impact their discussions. If we're having a discussion about the overall goals of the town, that we need capital to take into consideration, CPC to take into consideration, that's a different discussion. So it really depends on what we're planning for. If it's really a kickoff budget, it should be, you know, this board financed capital. Is really who should be sitting around the table, talking about, you know, where we stand with our, um, you know, revenue projections, and what we look like, what, what looks like's coming down the line, if there are any large capital projects that we just need to start having a discussion about, so everyone understands that these requests. It's a little early to do it early December, when budget requests will come in mid-December. Um, I think quite frankly, right at the beginning of January might be a good time. Because then we have the financial forecast of the town at the second meeting in February. I think it's just a, I'll, I'll have to talk to Steve Jelenic to see when he's starting the capital process. I think he starts it a little bit earlier. You know, again, just to get sort of the folks that will be voting on how we spend our money.
Right.
Um, versus, I know the CPC, but that's a different, it's not really budgetary general fund money. Um, how we're spending the general fund money, how we're spending, how we would anticipate spending free cash, any issues we see. Uh, we certainly could invite, you know, the superintendent to sit at that table, and what they expect to see for the school budget. Again, just no dis, no votes, just a discussion of where we're going this budget season. I think is the better approach versus, um, you know, I think at some point, you still need to define some goals of, you know, overall goals for the town, so that every board and committee can keep those in mind as they go through their own processes. Uh, but I think for this specific one, it would be you finance capital, myself. Is what I would say.
Assessors?
No, cause all they do is set the tax, I mean, they don't really, it's new growth, and they don't control that. You know, it's not something that they can fluctuate. So I think, you know, we certainly have them at the tax classification. I don't even know why, quite frankly, they're involved in the financial forecast of the town or the state. financial forecast of the town or the state of the town.
Right.
You know, there's really nothing from their point of view that we wouldn't already know.
That might be in the charter for the rest of them.
When is the state of the town, does that have a date set on it?
It's the second meeting in February. And I don't think it's in the charter, I think it's, it's the town administrator presents a state of the town, and it's turned into the town administrator inviting boards and committees to give their state of the town. That's not how I plan to proceed, um, I didn't expect that this past year, I was kind of shocked when boards started chiming in with what I have already compiled as my presentation, um, so that will not be the same, but, um, but so I I, you know, yes, their information is valuable, but I don't see how it would contribute to, other than me saying, I've talked to the assessors, and here's their expected new growth.
Okay, so I think I'm confused, cause I.
Yeah.
I think I thought that we were talking about maybe the very first, um, group meeting toward our long-term goal number three. And I'm fine if that's not what we're talking about, but that's what I thought we were, we were discussing, so that's why I made the comment.
Right, and that's right, it depends on what your goal of this meeting is, and which direction you want to talk about for this specific meeting, yes.
Um, Zach and then Jim.
Just want to ask a question, uh, it's really, cause I I, exactly what you said was sort of, I had two parts to this meeting. One was exactly what you just described, and the second would include sort of thinking about capital projects, and trying to start to understand priorities in the town, and and that larger discussion that I think CPC may actually be, like, very beneficial to be part of that sort of capital planning, long, you know, like, really thinking about what that looks like. How long do you think that, you know, and this is to 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 both of you, since you're, you know, you're setting the agenda, what type kind of timing for a intro-budget session, you know, is that an hour, is that two hours? Cause I think for me, I'm willing to spend a little more time at that single meeting if we have everyone convened, hitting on two topics, just because I know we have them all convened in there, so I don't wanna, like, I'd rather use an extra hour at that point in time, because they're there to make sure we're hitting on what we need to, unless we think it's too big of a topic to hit on both of these on the same night. Um, but for me, I would like to be efficient with that, because I I do think both of these are really important to me, both what you suggested, for our core, you know, for our core general fund committees, and then that larger capital meeting, that I think may lead to a a different and alternative future strategy meeting that we may wanna start to engage in with this long-term goal.
Well, as I recall, Denise did the best presentation I'd heard yet on the town budget in about five minutes. So, um, I mean, but that, it was, it was that, she was presenting the budget, so it wasn't the the development discussion, so. So I, I mean, but I I hear what you, I mean, cause I, I'm totally, I guess I was totally leaning to the first thing, about having more of that policy discussion that was more around the long-term thing, so it is a very different timing issue. And and how that fits into like master plan, and, you know, things that really should be setting the the direction. And, but we've put it off for so long, it's getting less and less clear, so, um, so I don't, I'm not sure what to say in terms of how long it would take, and I I think it would be tough to do it in the same meeting, just because it's a change of focus, pretty dramatic from from that short term to the long term.
I would agree, um, cause I think you start to muddy the waters when you're talking about, you know, everyone sitting around the table, and you're talking about general fund, and then you're talking about CPC, and then it starts to get, you know, your money, my money, what we're doing with this. I I think separating the budget discussion, not having CPC included.
Right.
Uh, but if this is policymaking and goal-setting and overall big picture and master planning, then I think absolutely they should be sitting at the table.
Right.
So I thought the idea of the meeting at the beginning of the budget season, started off with the fact that we used to have a similar meeting, but with just the chairs. And that we all kind of agreed that the meeting itself, and the information imparted at the meeting was a good idea, but having it just be to the chairs wasn't good. And, because there is a certain amount of stuff that you really do want everyone to be on board with at the beginning of of the budget season. How much free cash is available, what are other stored assets are, how much of, you know, what are the, what's the outlook for this year's capital projects, what's the town administrator thinking for using stored assets, what's the town administrator thinking for borrowing? Any big operating budget hits? That in and of itself is very valuable for everybody to hear and to be on, and I mean, if that's the scope, A, it's very valuable, B, the people who Denise listed would be the right people to have there. I don't know that we won't, if if we wanna go beyond it, then I guess we go beyond it, but I would think that that would be enough. And that's the stuff that really has to be talked about at the beginning of December, or early November, or, you know, at that time.
I have two questions.
Yes.
One is, I think I already know the answer to that, but, but would it make any sense to, um, to try to put that meeting with our planning meeting, so that the the budget, um, finance, you know, the the regular financial boards, I'll call them, not including CPC, with our planning, our own personal planning night, or would it cut us too short?
Well, and Denise had suggested that that's a little early in terms of, she would have had requests in yet, right?
Well, it depends on, again, it depends what we're talking about.
What we're talking about.
Um, I mean, I think, you know, just discussing where we stand, what our revenues look like, what the expectation is. But yes, I won't really have, the beginning of December, I won't know a picture of the budget requests, even borrowing. I mean, I can have a hypothetical on what we would, but until I start seeing capital projects and.
Right.
I won't have some of those answers, um, but still, it gets into the dialogue of, you know, where we wanna be. So I think, you know, if you make it too late, then we're already in the middle of budget season, so it's a fine line to balance. I think if you're having sort of a preliminary kickoff, then it would be, make more sense to have it early December, cause it's just a kickoff. Some of the stuff will all be hypothetical, or, you know, what-if scenarios. Because once, you know, then, cause quite frankly, if something came out of that meeting, that then I need to incorporate into the budget process, then I still have time to do that versus after all the requests come in, and then I say, well, now we need to go back to X, Y, or Z, so.
So my, my second thing is that I, I'm realizing as, as we talk about these, that I think part of what is perhaps really useful right now at this point in time, is that, um, I feel like something that's going on for CPC is that everything's changed. We used to talk about just being sitting ducks, like, we just wait, somebody comes, they say, hey, we want thirty-five thousand dollars, or hey, we want three million. But, um, now, like, they're beset, there's, there's multiple requests, possibly for many years, there will be requests that are beyond the scope of the fund. And so, in a way, I think they need support, being in the conversation in a different way, they need support looking at their role a little bit differently. Because they were very uncomfortable having to choose last year between projects. And I think that, um, the part of the conversation is around how to, how to handle that.
Right.
Um, and maybe, you know, so, um, so I don't mean to to press for that, but I, um, I'm also aware that I'm definitely better in the abstract. And so, so like, these abstract conversations are where I feel comfortable. When we start with very fine print spreadsheets, I kinda, I can follow it, but I'm not.
Well, and I think that's where where we were back in July was, you know, it would, you know, that's where we wanted to move the board, the select board, towards, you know, helping the town have those long-term goals, and and being more clear on where we wanna be heading. And and I think that's, you know, that's even where we first started talking about this meeting, was, you know, because we, you know, we wanna be supporting CPC members as well as the other boards, and like, cause how are they supposed to decide, except for like, you know, this is how our spreadsheet can balance, you know, or whatever, you know, so, yes, Denise, please.
Taking the training wheels off, um, but to that point, I would say they need to ask that of the board.
Yeah.
I think the CPC needs to say to this board, this is what we need from you, not the other way around. Cause I think that's where we got into trouble, is when this board tried to say, we wanna weigh in on your projects, they all said, this is our mon, I'm paraphrasing, this is our money, we make those decisions, but yet, when it is a tough decision, they want this board to make a decision. I think they need to define what their role is, and how they see the board, this board interacting with them, and then ask for that, versus this board saying, this is how we see you functioning and what we, you should be doing. Cause I think they should be, you know, they are an autonomous group, they should be asking this board for the guidance that they need, and it should be defined. It should be, going forward, this is how we see your role versus our role, not picking and choosing when they have a tough decision, it comes before here.
Yeah.
So, I guess I, that's why I sort of saw this meeting as, as a forum, where all of the the boards or committees that are, have financial interests in town, got in the same room and talked about how to handle our finances in light of the challenge the CPC now has. Um, and and so that we could support each other, or we could get on the same page together about how how to have that conversation.
So do you see that as like a joint boards meeting, we would have for like an hour, and then the, this board would meet to sort of debrief on that afterwards for an hour, so that we can digest what happened in this meeting, and then take that moving forward with our goals, and and things that we can do with that. Does that make sense? Because I feel like that's a way that we kill two birds with one stone. We've, we're not going into a meeting where it's just the five of us, and we don't have any, not that we wouldn't have anything to talk about, but like, that we, we wouldn't have action items that were like right in front of us, that we could really deal with at that moment. I do think that, and I don't, I don't wanna say what everybody else has been saying, but I do think that that it really is two different, very different, very different discussions, right? It's like, how do we run the town this year, how are we running the town over a five, ten-year period, given whatever? This, this is a stupid question, but do CPC funds roll over?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Thanks, Jim.
Sorry to pull on this, um, I think the conversation with CPC, well, first of all, I agree a hundred percent with Denise, that it has to be initiated, should be initiated by the CPC, and they have to make up their minds about whether they wanna hear what we have to say or not. Unfortunately, the decentralized nature of town government makes that necessary. They have to be receptive to it, and then, when we have that conversation, I think it has to be us and them. Um, I don't think we need a room full of other, of other committee members. Um, and I think we need to be clear with them, and I think, and I was right there doing it, we booted it last time, cause it was three weeks before town meeting, and I think some of us didn't say what we really wanted to say, because we didn't want to, um, you know, have had, somebody have done a lot of work, and then not have it go forward. But I think some of us wanted to be more discouraging about certain things than we really were. So we have to have that conversation far earlier than three weeks before town meeting, and we need to be clear, if they're receptive.
So it sounds like, right now, we should just plan for the, this year's budget meeting. And we'll, we'll wait, I mean, it's our, it's our long-term goal, that we're gonna have more of a planning horizon, um, that we will be leading the town into more of a planning horizon, so.
Yes, and I, so I think once CPC has their request in, if they want to figure out how this board can assist them, cause obviously, Stow Acres is taking a significant amount of money. It did, does not dry up everything, it takes, it's taking current funding, so there will still be more funding coming through, um, the tax revenue and with the state match, uh, but there's only going to be so much money to do projects. They did choose not to touch the affordable housing bucket, even though they technically could have. Um, they did not, and they did not touch the historical, um, bucket. Um, the majority of it is unreserved, and they're taking three hundred thousand from open space. So they they may, they may very well need some direction on how did they prioritize the projects that are coming before them with limited funds for the next several years, because until they really replenish it, they're going to be in that same situation, if a large project, if the town hall projects comes back around, um, or when the town hall project comes back around. So, I mean, I do think it's a good exercise, and I do encourage them to figure out as a committee what they need from this board, and to have that meeting with the two boards to really, you know, have a, you know, not an adversarial conversation, but, you know, how can we help you, how can you help us?
Right.
And just really figure out how we can accomplish the goals with the funding that we have, and with input from the board. And that would, I would say, maybe January-ish, um, after they get there, December first is their deadline, then they'll start their meeting schedule.
Seems like people are always late, though, on their deadline.
I did hear a whisper about pushing the deadline forward a little bit more.
Right.
I, I pushed it to December first as a starting point to.
Right. Um, so should we plan that, that annual budget meeting that we talked about with, that would be with capital planning and finance? Um, and you said, early January?
No, I mean, I think December makes sense to really kick, if we're kicking off the budget season, if we're talking about specifics, I won't have them. It'll be more of a general term and.
Oh, okay.
Anticipation for the budget season.
Right.
Um, so I think December makes sense to have that conversation.
So, we could do that as part, I mean, we could split our planning session that we just scheduled, and do part of that, as, if that, does that make sense to people? I don't know that we, I mean, we only, we did our last session in two hours, and that was start, starting from scratch, so a a full hour that we could just spend just the five of us, or six of us, um, and we still give an hour to that. Okay, so we propose that for.
So December seventh for everything?
December seventh, yeah.
Pearl Harbor Day.
Pearl Harbor Day. Were you alive for that trip?
Says the woman who I'm guessing is.
Is older than you!
Is older, okay.
Okay, now we, we finally get to the town administrator's report.
I feel like I need to move my report to the beginning of the meeting. Um, so, so Dolores began yesterday, um, which I'm psyched about. Especially when at six-thirty, I received an email that there was a personnel issue, and I said, Dolores starts at eight. Um, so she actually has, I mean, she, as we expected, she hit the ground running in the first hours.
Yeah, it does, right.
And it's really great when she says, you know, I've been looking at the personnel bylaw, and we really need to update that, and we really need to make some policies off of this, and, um, it's just, it's so refreshing that she has these ideas, and really can just hit the ground running. So, I will say, don't be shocked when you start seeing two and three HR policies on every meeting, because there's a lot that we need to do there, so.
She and I will be fighting for space on the agenda, seriously.
Um, but yeah, so it's great, we're, uh, it's super excited, um, we had our department head meeting today, she was able to, um, interact with, we're still virtual, so, uh, she's met most of the department heads, a few, um, of the offsites that she still hasn't met. Um, but she's looking forward to going out, uh, to all of their departments, seeing where they work, touring their locations, and and really hearing from them on their operations and how she can help them, so, wonderful. Had a meeting today with Eversource, the Sudbury to Hudson line project is starting. Although I say that, uh, it was a pre, pre, pre-construction meeting, uh, they really didn't have many answers. I think quite frankly, because there's only three hundred feet that impacts Stowe, they're not really focusing on us. But they had six people at the meeting, we had six people at the meeting. Um, there's some concern, again, even though it's only three hundred feet, there's some concern about what they're proposing. Um, and it sounds quite frankly like they are digging out the tunnel that goes underneath the corridor, and that's what they plan to use for some of their work. So obviously, we have concerns about, um, truck capacity over that, um, impact to the neighborhood. Um, they really didn't have any answers as to how, when, why, um, you know, it might start this spring, it might start the fall, I don't know. Maybe we'll be done by twenty-twenty-three, we were like, so, they are starting their discussions. They will be sending us a project page that people can stay up to date. They are going to be rolling out a constant contact list so that people can get regular updates. Um, they do plan to do, um, door-to-door for the abutters, um, in case somebody isn't on our website or doesn't follow the project. They will be doing outreach, um, I've asked them to, once the project gets going, to keep us updated. They will be doing outreach, um, I've asked them to, once the project gets going, to keep us updated. I tried to narrow down how much time in Stowe they planned to work and that was anywhere from six months to two years, so. Um, none of us were impressed, quite honestly, um, with the team and, and the project thus far. So we will, um, continue to hear about that and hopefully get some better information.
It's not like they haven't had time to get ready.
Again, I, I don't know if it's not that they're not ready, I think that they're not ready for Stowe, I think they felt like, ah, again, three hundred feet, we don't really need to do much work. And then we started asking questions and, um.
Just, just one follow-up on this, so they have all their permits, including the Sudbury Concom?
So they filed some, they have preliminary filing some, they wanna give us a heads up that more filings are coming. It was really, uh, they were so adamant that we have this meeting and at the end of it, we're all like, what just happened? I mean, the two chiefs had a conversation after, Dolores came in to me and she goes, I was not impressed by those people. It was just so bizarre, so, but they are starting the conversations. You know, we brought up some concerns, obviously, the terrible accident in Maynard, um, you know, that's on people's minds when you're talking about running gas lines, so. We wanna be reassured a bit more, um, but yes, they still have to go through the majority of the permitting process in all the towns. I assume you all heard last week, the president's vaccine mandate, um, we do meet that criteria, we do have more than a hundred employees. Uh, we are waiting on guidance from OSHA and Department of Labor Relations about implementation and deadlines. Um, I will tell you, it's already caused some concern here for employees that do not wanna be vaccinated. We will be working on policies from the guidance on what will be required if they're not vaccinated in terms of. Um, documentation, timelines, testing. But just in case anyone hears, we, we do qualify in that mandate, so. I, I do know several states are suing, I, I don't believe Massachusetts will be one of them. So I do expect it to move forward, um, in what capacity, they gave the federal employees seventy-five days to comply. So I'm not sure what they'll, um, issue for us, but just so you know, we do meet that criteria.
Are you currently, um, with the staff that aren't vaccinated, do their coworkers? Are they aware that they're working side by side with people who aren't vaccinated?
Another question on that, do we have staff that, um. Have been told they should not be vaccinated by medical professionals or?
Not that we've been given anything solid. So we've heard it's a religious exemption and then when someone's pushed, it's, well, I don't really have a church, I don't really follow anything. I don't, um, you know, I think I have a medical exemption, you need a doctor's note, well, I don't really think I have an exemption, so. I think this whole process, uh, will be beneficial, just that we will get those answers, we will know. You know, if there is a legitimate medical exemption, you'll have the letter and then you have to do X. Um, if there is a religious exemption, uh, most organizations are requiring a, you know, letter from the clergy of that respective organization. So, and, and obviously if it's a medical, it's a licensed physician, uh, so those are things that we're still waiting on, um. Uh, to fine tune, uh, we had some discussions about that last week throughout the TA groups, um, and obviously the HR groups are buzzing about it, so. Uh, once it comes down, we will define some policy for that, um, but just wanted to give you all a heads up that, um. Folks didn't think that we qualified and we do, cause we have fifty-three fire employees, so.
It's gonna be incredibly important for moving forward in this, uh, for my own, uh, for me as a member during these discussions. Will you be bringing policies to the select board and select board to approve anything, or will this solely be within your purview?
So I don't believe anything will come to the board, um, I consider these really as temporary measures, um, so I've actually implemented a number of temporary. Um, policies during COVID, um, that have not come to this board, I think if it's something that we need to implement as a permanent personnel policy, it would have to come here.
Man, I'm sure if I may, just to you in terms of ethics, obviously, I will have a conflict of interest with any policies surrounding vaccine mandates due to my employment. And financial stake in the company that I work for. Therefore, if that does come in front of it, just we'll let you know that I'll have to recuse myself during that time.
The Board of Health has scheduled their flu clinic, um, it will be Saturday, October sixteenth, and they are having it indoors at the community center. Uh, they are still working on logistics and they're still working on final details, we will be putting out the information when that comes around. Um, but I found that out today, so that is, um, and that is a firm date. The twenty-twenty census, we are at seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four residents.
Seven thousand one hundred forty?
Seventy-four. Um, thankfully, there will be no re-presincting, um, so on your next agenda, Lynda will likely be here. Because even though there's no changes, you have to sign that the maps are unchanged, uh, she was just waiting for the information, so she will likely be here next meeting. Um, just for that ceremonial vote that the maps are unchanged. I, I spoke briefly about PFAS, so PFAS is moving forward, obviously. We are, the cost of the poet systems that we're installing have increased. And we're moving, um, quicker through the process than we originally planned. They're actually making significant headway. Excuse me, um, so we will be requesting additional funding at the special town meeting, uh, to carry us over. To continue to meet DEP's requirements, um, in a timely fashion. Um, I will say, um, I got some clarification at a meeting last week that the. American Recovery Plan Act funding, um, the ARPA funds, while it will go for coronavirus relief. It will also cover infrastructure projects, I've touched on this briefly. PFAS is one of those, um, so we could certainly look to utilize some of those funds to offset some of the PFAS costs versus continuing to borrow against it. Um, I am, I spoke to Dolores yesterday that I am inclined to move forward with hiring. Either full-time or part-time, depends if I get another town involved. But one of the good things about the ARPA funds is it, it can be used to hire staff to administer the ARPA fund. Uh, because it is a federal grant, there are significant federal grant requirements and audit requirements, and quite frankly. Limitations on what can and cannot be used, I think it makes prudent sense for us to bring in somebody that they can, their sole focus can be, how we can use this. Do some outreach with departments, possibly do some community outreach, we could potentially look at it for Lower Village. Um, because water infrastructure is one of their checkbox items. Um, and really figure out how we can best spend these funds. I believe, the formulas are all over the place, but I, I believe we will be close to one point five million dollars in ARPA funding. Um, so some of that will still be used for COVID. Excuse me, COVID-related funds. But as the CARES Act is, um, ending, um, even though we have CARES Act funds remaining, we're technically not allowed to spend them. Unless it's a legitimate COVID, um, exposure, we need to start transitioning to the ARPA fund, so. So I'll be working on that, um, several of the towns have put forward, uh, these ARPA administrator positions to get somebody on board. I don't think, quite frankly, we need somebody full-time, um, I, I think I'm gonna hit up Bolton, um, they're just as lost as we are in how to handle the ARPA fund, so. I think if we can bring in somebody that works between the two towns, obviously, we have similar needs in the community, so. Um, I think that would make the most sense of bringing someone on and really guiding us through this process and the audit and the grant requirements. I, I touched upon briefly before the meeting, um, so we are having filming of a movie taking place this Friday. Uh, folks should expect that if they are traveling on Crescent Street, there may be delays. There will be police details on site tomorrow from, I think, ten AM to two PM. And then on Friday, starting at one in the afternoon and going until, I actually think it's three AM. Saturday morning. Hopefully, there will not be a lot of interruption, other than having to stop traffic from time to time, um, but there will be large equipment, folks will see that. Stationed around the former fire station, um, there'll be lighting, there will be fog and misting machines overnight. Uh, so if anyone sees that, don't be alarmed, they have notified all of the neighbors, um, so there may be smoky, foggy, misty scenes. Um, they are planning to do most of their filming outdoors, so, that is happening this Friday. There is still some interest in possibly filming elsewhere in town, we are working on that. Um, and then, just to bring you all up to date, uh, the callings mediation is taking place on Friday. So I will, uh, keep you all posted, we will need to schedule an executive session, um, in the upcoming week or so, depending on what. Transpires of that, but that is taking place on Friday, actually here in this room, we're doing it in this building, so. That is what I have for you this evening.
That's pretty exciting, right? Any questions, any other questions? It's all good, wow, um, okay, um, meeting minutes. Any, um, this is from the last meeting. Somewhere here, whatever date that was, August twenty-fourth, any changes to the minutes? And I will take a motion.
Chair, I move approval of the minutes of the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
Second. All in favor? Like Joyce, I don't know how many hours it takes her, but she does a great job. And then correspondence, um, just wanna, uh, thank Megan through the, and the planning board for sharing their, um, guidelines on. On public hearings. I knew it existed, but it was, thank you for making it anyway, sending it on, so we have it in front of us again, even if it's, all of us could use those. Anything else on correspondence? Okay, um, I think, oh my god, it's ten o'clock? Do I have a motion?
So, so chair.
All in favor, sorry. How did it happen?